So cute.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's a snuggler too, isn't he? He likes to snuggle. Yeah.
Yep.
Tanya, how old?
Uh, nine weeks.
That's good.
I am going to call the meeting to order. As you'll notice, I'm not Kathy Codyann. Kathy is officially on vacation this week, so I will be chairing the meeting and taking over all the regular chair duties. But because she understands that this is an important meeting, she is still with us tonight for the discussion and for any voting that might occur. So if you're confused why she's here, but I'm chairing the meeting, that is why. So first things first, we will do our pledge of allegiance. Steve has his flag. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go straight into citizens comments now, and then we'll talk about how the rest of the agenda is gonna go. We received probably over 200 emails since our last meeting on Thursday. I think I stopped keeping track when it reached 100. And if anyone sent in emails late this afternoon, I'm sorry, we did not get a chance to respond to them because there's so much going on. Most people just wanted to voice their opinions or ask questions. I have seven that I'm going to read verbatim right now. And these are in the order in which they were received. So the first is from Liz Camilleri of Bolton. I just want to say that the proposal to go all online for the high school brought great relief to me. I am so torn about what to do for my children. Send them to school where they want to be for their mental health, or break their hearts and keep them home for safety while many of their friends do go. Honestly, I don't want a choice. I want you to tell me what to do. The third-party plan was scaring me because both my husband and I will be at work and our children will be home alone to navigate this by themselves. Being remote with their own Neshoba teachers, where all, in caps, their classmates are in the same boat, allows them to have support from their real NRSD teachers and their friends, because I will not be there to help them. The thought of my daughter having to start high school in a third-party program with logins and platforms that she is unfamiliar with, and teachers who are in some other town or state, and literally not being able to be here to help her figure it out the first day or any other day was terrifying. Making the choice to go all remote, where we will be eventually anyway, allows teachers to put their whole hearts and time into making it the best plan it can be. I am in full support of all remote for the high school. I also support either option for K to eight, as I feel it is a different situation. Our second is from Todd and Donna Kelleher from Bolton, Neshoba Regional School Committee. I reviewed, sorry. I reviewed my previous statement. He sent a longer email, but we're just reading an excerpt from it. If the decision is made to start the school year with full remote learning for Neshoba Regional High School, we request you and the school committee strongly consider a model that will bring the freshman students physically into the high school for an orientation period for some defined period of time, parentheses, example, a few weeks. This would give that group the best opportunity to get started successfully for their high school experience. Such as Harvard University and other schools are doing, we strongly think that our freshmen need an initial face-to-face experience with their teachers in school to get oriented and started on the correct path. Our third email is from Grace Ocardo from Bolton. I urge the committee to recognize the critical importance of the first few weeks of school to our high school community. The reopening plan clearly states the goal of a safe, in-person return to school for as many students as possible. Given our low infection numbers in the region, we can attain this goal with the hybrid model, including our high school students. The reopening plan does an exceptional job of emphasizing the importance of positive community-building activities to establish and maintain strong relationships at the start of school. A face-to-face model is by far the best way to establish those relationships. High school students need them every bit as much as younger students, if not more so, given the critical importance of peer relationships to teenagers. Our reopening plan needs to recognize the first few weeks of school as the most critical phase of the school year. This is when relationships are developed, expectations are set, and community is formed. This is when in-person has the highest benefit. Please don't take away this critical time. Doing so will compromise the effectiveness of the remote model for the entire academic year. Teachers will have 10 days of professional development to prepare for remote instruction. Students should have at least the same number of days in person to do the same. Prepare for a successful year of largely remote instruction. The first stage of the year is absolutely critical to the success of the rest. This is a choice that parents should be able to make for their high school students. Full remote is available to anyone, everyone. Hybrid should be as well. Thank you. The next one is from Jonathan Bellwitz of Bolton, and this is also a portion of a longer email that he sent. Based on the families I have spoken to, the majority are very much in favor of the hybrid model. The data on coronavirus has very clearly shown that children ages zero to 19 are the least-risk category, with there being zero deaths in the age group in Massachusetts. The CDC themselves, which should be considered the utmost authority in this pandemic, have stated the following. Quote, "The best available evidence indicates if children become infected, they are far less likely to suffer severe symptoms," end quote. In addition, the CDC states, quote, "At the same time, the harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional, and behavioral health, economic well-being, and academic achievement of children in both the short and long term are well-known and significant," end quote. I think this is an incredibly important point to consider. Percent positive, daily cases, daily deaths are all metrics to be tracked. Yet how do you track the impact of social distancing, community shutdowns, and virtual learning on kids, both academically and socially? I am afraid the choices being made now by committees such as yourselves will not be fully realized for years when we see the dramatic impact as these children grow up and have lost all of these important, social, emotional, and learning moments. If now is not the time to give in-person learning a chance, then when? All right. Our next email is from Elizabeth Davis Edwards of Bolton. This is a time of great fear and anxiety, not only for our community, but for our entire country. In the context of over 150,000 dead, our school year is about to begin. May I humbly suggest that we not let tonight's conversation or the decision that we make as a result be driven by fear? Dan Rather once said, "We are a nation not only of dreamers, but also of fixers." I believe that this fact remains true right here in the Neshoba district. We are full to overflowing with people with good hearts, good intentions, great education, and significant resources. In reality, there is no problem that we cannot address. Of course, COVID has presented us with a monumental challenge that supersedes our ability to even fully understand, never mind fix, at least in the short term. But working together with the best data and technology available today, we could surely minimize the risks and maximize the learning for our kids for this coming school year. Thanks to our district's collectively privileged situation, there are three things we can count on. One, eventually, this virus will be a thing of the past. Two, no matter what we do, our kids will miss out on parts of their, quote-unquote, "normal" education relative to a, quote-unquote, "normal" year. But we'll gain other kinds of deep, hard-won lessons in return. Three, most people and kids in our community are going to be okay. But for me, "most" isn't good enough. If we go back to school and one of our teachers or their husbands or wives die as a result, any number of weeks of in-person instruction, albeit beneficial to my kids, will not be worth it. And based on what we know of COVID, the chance of this happening if we all return to the classroom in any scenario is high over time. I believe our job tonight is to do everything in our power to protect the most vulnerable within our community, kids, teachers, and families, so that once the cloud of COVID disappears, we are all, every last one of us, still standing. In my opinion, this solution requires a more nuanced approach than hybrid versus remote. It requires that we provide different options for those with different risks, both teachers and students. Lowell, Cambridge, and Newton have all proposed hybrid models that manage the risk of various students and teachers by providing more in-person optics for kids with special needs, teachers with high-risk or high-risk family members, and parents with special circumstances, and asking the rest to lean more heavily on remote. The truth is, some of us need to be in person more than others. Tonight, I hope we will consider how this might work at Neshoba and to look to and follow the models of others who are further down this path. In It's a Wonderful Life, when George Bailey tries to keep his bank open in the financial crash, he asks members of his community to withdraw only the cash they actually need to survive until the crisis calms down. Some ask for a full amount of their account upfront, and others ask for just a few dollars. In the end, the bank remains solvent because people take only what they need. I feel like this is our George Bailey moment. Let's think about what's best for our community as a whole, each of us taking what we need and leaving the rest for someone else. If we do this, I hope and pray that all of us will walk away from this pandemic a little stronger and a little wiser, with not one precious life lost. And we may do this not out of fear, but out of caring for one another, because really, that's what's community. This community is all about, for what it's worth. All right. Our next email is from Ally Solberg, who is from Stowe. She's a senior at the high school. In a recent article called "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools For Fall," this fall, the CDC argues that the detrimental effects of keeping schools closed greatly outweighs the risk that is posed by opening the schools. Please begin this year by offering a hybrid model and a third-party remote learning academy. The simple plan creates two independent groups that allows the hybrid group to switch to full-time remote learning if need be. Thank you. And finally, this is from Holly Klack of Stowe. Thank you to the school committee for all you are doing to create a safe learning environment for our children. I understand the many challenges you are facing. My comments relate specifically to the situation at the high school. I strongly believe that a remote learning program for all NRHS students until at least December 30th, 2020, is the best solution for our community at this time for the following reasons. Number one, it best protects the health of our teachers, students, and community. Number two, all involved could focus on one program or method rather than having to prepare for potentially several types of programs, such as hybrid with in-person and remote days, use of a third-party for remote students, total remote situation if hybrid fails, et cetera. Number three, there is no disruption to learning when inevitably, and this will happen, a student or teacher is infected with COVID. Number four, students will have teacher interaction five days per week rather than just two or three days per week, likely leading to a more stimulating, challenging, and fulfilling learning experience. Number five, it keeps the NRHS community whole and does not exclude teachers that do not feel safe returning to classrooms in person, and students or parents who similarly do not feel comfortable with the risk and are directed into a program with a third-party with unknown teachers and academic quality. So those are the seven I received. If I did miss one, speaking to the people who are watching at home, I'm really sorry. There were a lot of emails coming in today. And I just want to be clear that with the over 200 emails we got, there was not a clear majority about what people preferred in terms of what they wrote in about. They were nuanced. And I just want to challenge everyone tonight to keep an open mind that our community largely asked us to be creative and to look outside, think outside the box when looking at solutions. And creative often looks different. It looks like discomfort. It looks uncomfortable at the beginning. So I just want us to all keep an open mind, know that there is no simple answers to any of this. So now I will turn it over to Brooke and the administration. They're gonna do a presentation, and then when they are done, I'll talk about how we're gonna do questions and the rest of the process.
Great. Thank you. So we want to thank everybody that's on the screen tonight. We've got more folks than usual. And in a minute, we'll have Steve introduce his team who's on tonight. We also want to note that I can see Laura Friend is here, Principal at Luther Burbank. Joan DeAngelis is on, our Director of People and Personnel Services. Ross Mall Karen is here, Principal of the Center School. Rob Frieswick is online as well. Of course, our Director of Facilities, Pat Maroney is here, our Business Manager. Kyle Grady is our Principal in Stowe at Hail. And let me just see if I've missed anyone. There's Lisa. Lisa's here, of course, our Nurse Leader. Succi is here, our Director of Technology. And I think everybody else is, actually, Steve is going to introduce in a minute. So I just want to, I want to thank everyone that's on tonight. I'm also gonna say to, kind of piggyback from what Elaine was saying, I think there's a couple of things that we want to keep in mind here tonight. And I think one of the things that did strike me in the number of emails that came through was, I think that there's still a notion out there that people think that we can somehow return to, quote, "normal", like before March 13th date. And that, that just isn't a reality. I mean, you know, if we, for example, if we were to go with a hybrid model at the high school, we've said this before, but we want to say this again, we were looking at bringing in 100 to 200 desks, and that's where the kids would sit. And remember that by DESE guidelines, they sit facing forward at the six feet mark. And so even lunches aren't going to be like we would have anticipated. So whether it's passing in the hallways for even our middle school children or our high school children, it's all going to look very, very different. I also want to be respectful of the fact that we've received certainly emails from right across the board. So I mean, we still, I received one or two emails at least this week at GAIN that said, "Full return, no masks." I got a couple that said, "No masks." And we're not worried, and if people don't want us to send their children to school, then they can stay at home. So you kind of have that at one end of the spectrum, and then you go all the way to the other, where we received several that said, "Can you please consider full remote across the entire district?" So we never did compare notes. We just didn't have the time because we got so many in. And, you know, a gift for us is, you know, our parents are so creative, and they presented positive opportunities I hadn't even thought of. Like, wow, that was a really good idea. So a lot of that came my way that I was most appreciative of. And so we just want to thank everybody who took time, because I think we just received one or two shorter emails. All of the others were really, really well-crafted, very, very thoughtful. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who took a lot of time to write us a lot of notes. So thank you to everybody. So tonight, we're gonna kind of take a bit of a different approach, because on Thursday, we knew, Steve and I, you know, when we kind of hit a wall and said, "You know what? We better present to school committee the fact that we are gonna want to consider the possibility of a full remote start for the high school." That really did just happen on the Thursday afternoon. We had bantered it about certainly plenty of times before, but we had never landed, because every time the issues came up, we would work through the issues and try to go to the next step, and we could do that. But this, this last week was a little bit different. And so I said to Steve, "If we're going to put this on the docket for some discussion," I said, "It needs to come out at tonight's meeting." And I made a couple of quick final calls before, as we were saying, and I know that Mike Talson's on the call tonight. I think I was talking to him 10 minutes before. I literally went into the school committee meeting. So that's kind of how close that decision came, and we didn't want to wait until this particular meeting to bring it up for the first time. So what I appreciate about tonight now is that our high school team has the opportunity to lay things out from their vision, and I'll certainly help wherever I can. So I think we'll hear from the high school. First, then I know that there were one or two questions that were asked last time of Succi, and so he's here tonight to respond to that. And then you've given us about another 120 questions that are in our doc that we'll go through. And hopefully, we can get through them quickly, and we'll talk about that process when we get to it. So at this point in time, though, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve Cullinan, who is our interim principal, who's just been such a, I always tease and say such a soldier, but that would sound a little cliché, knowing that you're a ex-military, retired military.
I agree.
So we thank you so much. And tonight, you get to introduce your team, which we are so excited to have everybody on board. So thank you to our new people that are on tonight, and thank you to those that just continue to keep coming back for more and helping to support us. So Tanya, Katie, Jen, thank you. Mike, thank you so much. So Steve, we'll leave it to you to introduce your team tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to go through our thought process in this whole situation. I have a great team, and I know some of you don't know some of these folks, but they have worked so hard putting this stuff together. It's just, it's been fast, so fast and furious, and they've been just soldiers and the whole thing. So our two new Assistant Principals are, this is Janine Boulay and Mr. John Kroll. Our new Dean of Students is Mr. Matt Biggs. You all know our Athletic Director, Tanya Rich. Director of Guidance, Jody Specht. Director of Special Education is Katie Giannetti. And our two Neshoba Regional Education Association reps, who worked with us throughout this whole process, this is Jen Dontrmont and Mr. Mike Talson. It was, it was truly a good feeling, because we were all working for the same goal here. The administrative team and the union reps worked tirelessly in this program. It's been a cooperative effort among admin and teachers, all working toward a common goal. A survey was sent out by the, by the NREA, and they shared the findings on that. And most of the teachers were in favor of a remote start for this year, which helped us to feel like we might have been on the right track in that regard. But I, before, and I'm not, Brooke, I'm not sure how we put the PowerPoint up. Is there, is?
I think Alita can do that. I think if Alita has it. Alita, do you have it? The PowerPoint?
I do not. Didn't know there was, I didn't know there was a PowerPoint.
Todd, are you able to?
I can pull it up for you. Give me just a second.
Thanks, Todd. Sorry about that. I should have, I should have done this beforehand. These PowerPoints, these, these young kids are unbelievably powerful, I gotta tell you. I was sitting there just amazed at the stuff they were doing on the PowerPoint. It's an amazing document, I have to tell you.
Well, I think Steve, too, while we're waiting for Todd to bring it up, I think one of the things that we wanted to stress was, this was really about academics and safety. It was never about, like, somehow, like, the whole notion about masks has been circulating out there. That had nothing to do with it. It was always for us more about the academic component, making sure that we took this, the responsibility seriously of ensuring that our children are, were ready for whatever lies beyond grade 12. And then, of course, the safety component was in there as well. So Todd, thank you so much for putting that up, and we'll start to go through it.
Yeah, now that was my next point. I do want to stress that, though, because the mask-wearing issue is a mask-wearing issue. We're gonna have that in hybrid no matter what. But it's, as you'll see in our PowerPoint, we're really talking about academics and the safety of the building for the most part. I'm gonna start the, I'm gonna start off. You can go to the next slide, Todd, please. Essentially, just because I think, just hearing people in the public not really understanding that the remote model that we were going with in the spring isn't close to what we're talking about as a remote model now. And I want to, I want to just make sure that people understand that. In the spring, we were really working on a crisis management kind of thing, and Desi was giving us certain, certain things we couldn't, couldn't do. It was more just, just trying to keep the kids involved in the education process. It really didn't have a lot of, I'm sorry about that. It really didn't have a lot of actual teaching going on during that time period. It was more, you know, flexible attendance type things, and it was a pass-fail situation. What our goal is this year, coming forward with remote learning, is a much more succinct type of education with remote learning. We're, we're looking to go, go bring our, bring what our high school does every day in person to an online type of community. There's gonna be, we're gonna have prepared curriculum. We're gonna have, you know, new content being, being put out there. There's gonna be a lot more face-to-face instruction. We were unsure in the spring about face-to-face instruction, because we didn't know what, what the parameters were for that. We weren't sure about that. We have a much better feel on that right now. The attendance will be taken. We're going to be giving assessments, and there'll be grades, just like a normal, normal school year would be. I think what we're gonna try, what we're trying to do with the remote learning model that we're looking at right now is to get the kids used-to-being back in school. They've been out for six months. That's gonna be our biggest, biggest struggle, I believe, coming back. And, and, you know, the first couple of weeks of this remote learning, we're absolutely looking to bring certain groups of kids into the building. And we, I think I talked last week a little bit about the New Chieftain Day that we did with the freshmen. We're working on plans to make that work. We'll discuss that a little bit more in the PowerPoint going forward. But we've also, I mean, we're really kind of excited about a lot of the things that we might be able to do here, because without students in the building, we believe we can bring kids into the building piecemeal in a much safer manner, whether it be coming in for a lab or coming in for a, for a field trip. Or, I mean, ultimately, we've got to get these kids back in the building. We've got to get used-to-being back in the building. But that's really the difference between the emergency and the crisis management we were doing before and what we're moving forward to this year. And I hope people can understand that, because I think, just looking through some of the questions, I think there was some people thinking that the remote learning we're talking about right now is what we were doing in March, April, and March, April, May, June. And that's really not, that's really not the case. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over now to Matt Biggs. He's gonna talk about, you can go to the next slide, please. Health and safety, I believe. Yep, health and safety, and we'll move forward, and I'll come back at the end, if that's okay.
Thank you, Steve. Hello again, everyone. If you didn't know who I was before, my name's Matt Biggs. I'm the Dean of Student at the high school. So thanks again, Steve, for the introduction. So one thing that comes to mind, of course, when we're talking about a hybrid model and a remote model, is looking at how we can keep our community safe. So that's not just our students and not just our staff, but it's everybody who will be entering, you know, the high school. So some areas of challenge when we were looking at the hybrid model is, first and foremost, a typical classroom environment, where, as a district, we've committed to keeping students six feet apart in order to be more safe and more health-conscious. A part of that is facing forward, so that classroom environment that we normally see walking around the high school is gonna look significantly different. Some other points that we were talking about when we were considering health and safety, too, is different mask protocols and cleaning and hygiene protocols. All of these things have been discussed at the high school and put into preliminary documents to start to understand what this model would look like. A couple of different things that definitely stick out are hallway movement protocols. And if you look at the right-hand side of the slide, each student is in a class of 10 to 15 different students. Within that, they attend seven different, seven different classes over those two days, meaning that they, meaning that they will come in contact with about 80 to 100 other individuals each week, even with all of these safe and health protocols in place. It's something to keep an eye on. With half of the high school population, there will be approximately 450 students in the building at one time, needing to pass each other in between classes. We have movement protocols set up and put into place to help minimize the interactions between these students, but they will come into contact with each other. Lastly, you would still continue to have approximately 125 students at each lunch while social-distanced, without a mask on. So when considering health and safety as a high school, we have really taken a deep look at the hybrid model and the remote model in order to keep our students safe.
We can move to the next slide?
Yep. Next slide, please. And Janine, Janine Boulay is going to go through our economics slides for us.
Hi, everyone. Happy to join the community. I do want to just begin by saying I'm going to kind of walk through the process of our tax, our task force. And we were really looking at curriculum and scheduling. And at the forefront was always our goal of keeping fidelity to that high school academic experience. And that means for students to have specialized schedules and to have access to specialized subjects and to electives. And you know, all of that is part of their college preparedness. So when we started trying to put a schedule together, we knew that we wanted to stay safe and limit the number of students who are passing in the hallway and cohorts in classrooms, but still be able to give the students the academic experience that, that is so important for their futures. So we landed on this draft. I want to emphasize draft because this is still very much in discussion with the school building task force. But it gives you a glimpse of what we were looking at. However, as we kind of got into it, we were evaluating the schedule from a teaching, through a teaching and learning lens, these challenges just kept coming up for us. In this model, we do get to see our students in person, but students only see their teacher for each class once a week in person. And then the other work is done remotely. This, we think will affect pacing and rigor of the courses because you only have that one day a week with the teacher-directed content being provided. We kept coming up against the fact that we just didn't feel like this really gave enough support to our struggling learners. And big picture, we didn't feel that it really reflected our best practices in terms of pedagogy. So, you know, we're looking at those 85 minutes and they are longer periods. You could call them block periods. And there's lots of ways that block periods could be exciting in a classroom. But often that includes, you know, students working very collaboratively in groups. The teacher is circulating around the classroom, working with different groups. Perhaps you have different stations set up and different students in different stations for different products, projects. Just a lot of movement. And these 85 minutes, we're looking at, you know, students in assigned seats, sitting six feet apart, facing forward, receiving instruction from a teacher at the, at the front of the room. And perhaps in a lot of a lecture style. And it just doesn't reflect the kind of, the dynamic classroom that we, that we think of when we think of our best practices. That led us into a conversation about, you know, the flip side of this schedule, which is the remote learning side. And teachers were really eager to start talking about that actually, because they know that even in a hybrid model, they'll be seeing their, they'll be interacting with their students remotely for three of the five days of the week. So we started to talk about how we could enhance our remote instruction from the spring, how we could incorporate more digital learning tools, different kinds of models of blended learning.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Should we have the next slide up already?
And I was about to say, that leads us to the next slide. Which is what then we started to play with. Okay. What does that schedule look like? Because if we aren't then limited by passing numbers, then we can, we can be a little bit more fluid in what we're doing remotely. And so here, now you see, we get into a remote instruction and we can be interacting with our kids five days a week. So it just kind of the flip side of it, right? It offers more time with teachers and students, students interacting. They can, there's, we think that it would affect the pacing of the coursework as well. And we definitely see that there's more support for struggling learners there. And in general, it really became a conversation of just imagining the classroom and imagining instruction. So the classroom being the physical classroom, sure, but also the classroom and what is available to us remotely and imagining instruction there. And we just started to imagine a higher level of student engagement through, you know, the consistency of a single platform and just greater access to their teachers every day. So that's our process right now.
Todd, you could go to the next slide. So hi, everybody. I'm John Kroll. Like Janine, I'm one of the new assistant principals. And you know, it's pretty clear to me that the reputation that Nishoba has had in the community for the past, you know, 10 years that I've been around Central Mass is, is well deserved. It's been an awesome privilege to work with this team for the past couple of months. You know, one of the areas that we want to focus on is relationships and students' abilities to connect to each other. And you know, I think when you first kind of think about a hybrid model, you think, well, that's, that's part of the main reason why you have a hybrid model, right? Is so that you have those students to be able to connect with each other. But when, you know, when we started looking at it and what does that actually look like? We think there's actually more opportunity to do that sort of relationship building with a remote model. And I'd just like to kind of walk you through why. You know, if you think about, as you know, Matt Biggs was talking about classrooms, you know, the, the sheer organization of how classrooms are shaped changes dramatically. Not only that, but you now have classes separated into cohorts. So you have half the students there at one time. Movement through the hallways, just envision what that looks like when you have staggered dismissals of classes, students wearing masks, students separated by six feet. In-person classrooms that we talked about, the lunchroom, students remaining six feet apart, facing forward. Not a lot of opportunities for true collaboration there, especially where they're not wearing masks. When we talk about teaching and learning, as Janine did, you know, the authentic in-person group collaboration. It's much more difficult to do that in a hybrid model where students have to be socially distanced, have to wear masks. Whereas in a remote model, they're able to go into Zoom breakout rooms, for instance, or, you know, do all sorts of different things remotely and together. And again, potentially teachers behind, you know, Plexiglas, you know, limited check-ins. When we think about the remote model, you know, the entire class working together, small groups, shared projects. No, not in a cohort model, everybody. Let's see, student orientations. We have some opportunities and we've definitely put some thought into how do we bring students in for small group work potentially. Certainly we can do it remotely, but also physically in person, right? How do we, how do we actually do that? How do we get students to come in? Somebody brought up earlier, you know, the freshman orientation. We definitely would love to do things like that. There's, there's a lot of opportunities there. Integration of SEL, so social emotional learning, you know, that's going to be one of our focuses for sure with teachers in terms of how do you get students to build relationships? And that, that would certainly be in a hybrid model too. But how do we actually have students build relationships with each other? And do true, well-focused social emotional learning that's integrated into the curriculum? The administrative team is being trained on social emotional learning this summer. We already have some great ideas. And we want to impart those ideas to our faculty members. We think that there's, you know, it seems like it wouldn't be the case, but we think with the remote model, it's actually increased ability for students to interact safely. And then athletic opportunities proposed for both, you know, interscholastic competition, intermural, depending on sort of where we are with the state.
And for just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to break in, John, but Tanya, do you want to, do you want to expand upon the athletics a little bit? I know, I know it hasn't, nothing's been finalized yet, but do you want to just go into your, your, the plan that you guys are working on at MIA?
Yeah, not a problem. So as I mentioned a few weeks ago, we are still waiting on the guidance from Desi and the EEA. But our league has come up a proposal that we hope we can put into play once we get those guidelines. And it would look like breaking it into five seasons and following the governor's guidelines on what sports are safe at what time throughout the year. And you'd be playing in small pods. So you wouldn't be playing every school in your league. We break it into smaller groups that were close in proximity. So our travel would be shorter. And we would have it set up where you'd play the same school in all the sports in the same week. So then it would help us with contact tracing and knowing who we're playing against and working together. We also have protocols in place for health and safety around spectators and players and coaches. And we feel like this is a great way to re-engage our students. It also gives them accountability where they have to be eligible. So they have to be checking in their classes. They must be doing their work and they must be passing to be able to play sports, just like any other school year. In addition, I think, I think it was Elaine who mentioned last week that she drove by a lacrosse field and saw 100 kids out there playing lacrosse. Well, I think if we were able to have sports and our coaches were there, then our coaches are going to be the ones supervising this. So they're going to be making sure kids have masks on the sidelines. They're going to make sure we're following social distancing guidelines. And when we have our coaches there supervising, it's easier for myself and our coaches to follow these guidelines and make sure that the kids are following through with, with, you know, what Desi, the governor's office and the EA has put forward for us. So I think in a remote model, we do have a very good chance of having athletics. Because those would be the kids coming to the building and coming to campus. At the end of the day, we're not mixing cohorts. And I think we have a pretty good plan in place if we get the go-ahead. So again, it's all a proposal right now. None of this is set in stone, but we do have a plan moving forward.
Thanks, Tanya. And we're really, we're really hopeful that that works out because it's, you know, athletics is important for a lot of the kids here. And John, I apologize to interrupt you. Continue on, my friend.
Oh, I was about to hand it off to you. You're right. If Dr. McGuire wants to advance the next slide.
Perfect. So essentially, we knew that you folks had already had the PowerPoint or somewhat of the PowerPoint that we had started on at the beginning of the, beginning of the week. So we kind of went over it as best we could. We hope this answers a lot of the questions you might've had. And, and you know, we're open for, for answering any other questions you might have out there.
Well, before we get started, I'm just wondering, and Todd, thank you so much for doing that. We really, really appreciate that. I know, I know that when I think about some of the, the questions that have come up, and I know Jody, Jody was in here somewhere. I'm not sure if she's still on or not. I'm hoping she's there somewhere.
She's definitely here.
Jody Specht?
She's here. She's on the second page.
Is she? Okay, thanks. So I, I think one of the things that folks are wondering, Jody, is, you know, as we look at social emotional supports and that kind of thing, and I was thinking, Steve, back to some of the planning that we're thinking about for the Wednesdays. And we're looking at that across the districts certainly. But maybe you folks could talk to us a little bit about what you see happening with the Wednesday component. And, and I think, Jody, you might want to talk about some of the work that your staff has done this summer because it's been super exciting work.
You want to talk about Wednesdays first or shall I go?
Yeah, you know, you go, just go right ahead. You can talk about, a little bit about the Wednesdays and about the work that your group is doing.
Hey, hey, actually, I'm sorry, Jody. I'm going to interrupt for just one second because I feel like before we go any further, we should welcome our new administrators and our new leaders at the high school. What a way to get introduced to the public and to the school committee and to our broader communities. I noticed some new faces on the video, but I didn't put the names and connect it with the faces to realize that we have some new folks on our team. So I just want to say welcome to you guys. Thank you for coming into what is a very difficult situation on a normal day, right? And now you're coming into it in the middle of a pandemic, meeting everyone over Zoom, trying to put these unprecedented plans into place. So I just want to welcome, and then Jody, I will let you get back to it.
The funniest thing was they said, they said that they've already been in remote learning because they've met everybody through Zoom. So they've already done this kind of remote kind of thing. Sorry, Jody.
They rock, really. It's, it's, we're blessed. So I will tell you that Katie Giannetti and I have talked a lot. You might imagine March 12th, right? The fire alarm rings. We all leave the building. Ah, what are we going to do? Katie and I worked hand in hand all, all spring. And I think that as tired and exhausted as we were, we never felt confident like we were really meeting the needs of the kids. And so this has been an ongoing, you know, I don't know, neither one of us has stopped in this, in this regard. And we know that our focus needs to be outreach to kids. We need to provide the support, the security blanket in place. We know we cannot, I think either one of us could rattle off names of kids we're already worried about because they didn't perform well in the spring. There were times in the spring, we were calling, you know, we all had students we called every single day and gave them a small piece of work to do. So we know we have some experience helping the, the struggling remote learners to go through this. And so as part of this, some of the exciting things that have come out of it is we've taken our academic support center and that has been transformed into a student support center where we can address social emotional needs as well as academic needs. And we're working on a strengths-based plan for students and we're looking at solution-focused work. And it dovetails with the trauma-informed professional development that the whole school's doing. We will be working with kids where they're at, what they can accomplish, how do we build on that? And making every day a little bit stronger for each one of these students. We've looked at having, buying into a utility where we can survey all of our students on their resiliency factors and their resiliency skills in the moment and their protective factors. So that when school starts, we can identify the kids who maybe don't have a lot of protective factors in their outside life. And school really is, plays a larger role for them. We're looking at ways to monitor social emotional skills and gains and losses throughout the year with this utility. We've also looked at having our software integrate so that in a moment, I can see a student's profile with their academics, with their attendance and with their social emotional learning. And we can track the supports that we have in place for them. I actually, you know, I don't, people will have heard me say this. I don't, how, how we have a silver lining in COVID, I don't know. But we have a silver lining because I have found what I think is the best thing since Naviance. And I found that 22 years ago before we had graphical user interfaces. I mean, this is really a game changer, I think. And I want to thank John Kroll because when my team and I were, were trying to brainstorm ideas about surveying the kids and managing the data, because I really feel like resiliency is where we start with the kids. John was able to draw on some past experiences and bring this in. And I think we're going to have a better capacity to support kids in real time than I had even imagined was possible, to be honest with you. I also want to thank Brooke. She's been incredibly supportive with the student support center and recognizes that we have kids who for a variety of reasons need us to help support them through their social emotional times, need us to help provide that motivation and attention to getting work done. And doing this in a strengths-based way, not in a deficit way, in a, in really capitalizing on the solutions these kids already have. We have kids with amazing strengths. But sometimes we all fall off a little bit. Amy, do you have anything to add? Have I captured that? You know, I talk in your ear an awful lot. Okay. And then what, what we're looking at for Wednesdays, we've, we've identified some curriculum around social emotional. And these would be, I want to call them softer skills, but you know, I'm a guidance counselor. So when I think social emotional, I can be thinking of some heavy things sometimes. So, but things that our faculty will be comfortable with when we're working with kids around perspective-taking, around a lot of different, you know, ego strength and looking at where they're at and goal-setting, things that are natural teacher skills that we can sort of put our hands around and say, no, 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 these things do roll in to the, to the social emotional skills, especially when we're surveying the kids and we're finding out how do they feel about school climate? How do they feel about student voice and those kinds of things? And so we can tailor our social emotional learning mini lessons on Wednesday to different themes each quarter, maybe.
So just a couple of quick things to kind of spring from what you're saying, Jody. And Katie, I want to make sure that you have a chance to have a voice here in a second too. But John too, I'm so, I'm so excited about the software. I, I think that that is going to be of incredible benefit to our staff and students. And you know, with the, the capacity that it has and the fingertip control to just see in a heartbeat, you know, a, a student and, and all that goes with that student, whether it's marks, whether it's whatever. And so I really, I really feel that that's going to tighten that up, you know, for you. And I think be of such help. And also, I, I know that one of the things that has come, has come up too, and I think, Jody, you might speak just to this just for half a minute, is when we look back at the tail end of last year, I don't think people realize how much you reached out. You all reached out. And I just, I want to put a note out there again, that as soon as we went into the closure and I reached out to Chi and said, Chi, can you please get us 60 phones, six zero? And he got those 60 phones for us like, and that was in a heartbeat too. Within days, we had them and we were able to distribute them. and that was in a heartbeat, too. Within days, we had them and we were able to distribute them out to every guidance, like all of our counselors across the the district. And those phones are remaining in play at this point in time. So Chi, I just want to give a shout out to you too. Thank you so much for for doing that. But maybe, Jody, just speak a little bit about that because you're kind of alluding to that as we move forward. But just talk about some things that you folks did during the, you know, the closure that we just experienced.
So it really varied by student need and certainly certainly by counselor I can speak to. I'll give you, you know, different scenarios that I personally had where I and 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 level of level of performance has nothing to do with our kids who were unable to work. Okay, so we have really high achieving kids and some of our kids are kept afloat by the athletics that Tanya provides and the arts and everything they have going and they're going and they're going and they're going. And all of a sudden, March 12th happens and everything stops. And then we start trying to get going and they struggled to get back going. We we worked with guidance as guidance counselors, we worked with teachers to get smaller pieces of work. We had students. I I had a student who I was able to get working on one class a day and quite you know, if I didn't call, he didn't do anything. I have, I have one of the students I was calling daily had lost his sport and consequently kind of the and the structure of school and that shutdown really affected him biologically. And he had seen his doctor four times about med changes. You know, things, things change and things happen and and I another student who I was calling daily got completely caught up on everything she owed in every class except for one. And so that's some of this is working on those strengths and working on where the kids are at and and, you know, out of this is kind of born that Student Support Center, having the environment. The guidance counselors and I asked these our students at at the end of the year. If we, if next year we're back and whether we're back full time or who knows what, if I can have you can be in a study hall with me and we can keep doing this, do you want to? And absolutely, the student said, yes, I do. So I I want to, I'm excited about that. Okay, right. So I feel good. Yay. I like that. But I also know they the students were able to identify how helpful it was.
Jody, just because this is the first time they will have heard about the Student Support Center. And I've kind of given a little teaser every now and again. But maybe just it just really, really briefly, because I know that we've got some other folks here that we want to get to too. But can you just talk about what that Student Support Center actually looks like? Because that's your vision and your team's vision. And of course, Rob's here and we want to say thank you to Rob, who we share all of our visions with.
Rob, Rob has been has been amazing. We have a classroom very close to the front door, literally the first classroom when you walk in that high school building, which is important because our kids who struggle to come into school, walking through the whole school to get to their class is often the impediment. You know, often we'll have kids who are able to get into guidance, but then not get into class. Okay, so the Student Support Center is now going to be right across the the corridor from guidance. And it's pretty much a double sized classroom with very high ceilings. We've had it carpeted and painted in calming colors. We've got an area where there is quiet space for social emotional, where we have calm down kits for kids with anxiety and each one will have their own so that there's no sharing of materials. We have a place where the student can be on a like a treadmill and doing their work for the kids who need motion and need activity. And we know we have those kids who their anxiety is such that they need that. So they can come in, they can set up their Chromebook on the on the laptop, they can work or read and 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 walk on the walker. And then we have an area of individual desks and and sort of comfortable seating, yoga ball seating. We have some high tops, some low tops. We have a place for lunch for the kids who will not be able to manage the lunch with 125. And eventually, we're back in 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 full remote and then full full school and some of our kids, the sensory assault of that cafeteria is too much. And so this will be a quiet place to eat. We have a refrigerator and a microwave there for that so that they can have have their lunch in a in a sensory quiet place. We think that we have a good plan to build on the academics and and have set up with a software, a way to monitor and to work with the teachers on this. And again, we'll provide that spoke between the teachers and the students so that the work that they're able to do is recognized as valid and as getting turned in and what they're capable of today. And we're really looking at solution focused counseling as our guide for that piece of things. Again, it's strengths based and it builds on that and the kids feel good about that.
It's so, so excited about all of this work, Jody. Thank you. Katie, I just want to touch base here with you and then Tanya, I got a quick question for you. Katie, is there anything that that you want to add?
No, I guess as far as the reaching out piece that Jody was talking about, we did a lot of reaching out in special ed too. Each, you know, each student has a special ed teacher that's their contact person who worked with them primarily. But when we weren't getting results through that relationship, other people kind of got involved. And I was one with the district phone, so I was able to call on kids. Sometimes we were in Google meets with parents and kids, seniors that weren't quite finishing what they needed to do. Sometimes Joan ended up being the one that was calling kids as we were trying to get them involved. We had about 30% of our kids on IEPs, high school struggled mightily to participate. So there's a lot of emailing, a lot of one to one Google meets and a lot of phone calls. But I think we learned a lot through the process and we learned what our kids need. And you know, Joan and I were talking today and I just said to her that we're crazy because we're getting, I'm getting, and I know she is too, excited trying to think of how we could do this, like, how can we make it the best thing it can be? And, you know, I envision things like our seniors that are struggling driving to school to come to their a learning center drop in where they can get the support they need to kind of kickstart things to keep going. You know, all those ideas are starting to run through my head. So as nervous as I am and the unknown, I think we've got some good stuff brewing.
It is exciting. The whole thing is very exciting. And I think, Tanya, thanks, Kate. Tanya, one of the things we want to put out is the plan that the mid watch put forward. We're hoping that it will be approved, maybe, but we're hopeful by DESE and the governor. And if if it's approved, the mid watch folks really set that up so that the students could be taking part in it, whether they are remote or hybrid in their schools. So we want to just put that out there as well, right? Is there anything else that we missed on on that section, Tanya, that you can think of or no?
I don't think so. Like I said, I think we have that plan ready to go as long as we get the guidance that says that we can have fall sports and start something up this year.
But we also want to let folks know that it's very different than any other fall sport season we have ever seen. So we want to put that out there too, Tanya. Just just talk quickly about what fall season, for example, if it was approved, might look like.
For example, right now, based on the governor's guidelines, the sports that we could have this fall would be cross country, golf, field hockey and soccer. So again, we're going by what the governor sets for those guidelines and what sports. Our plan, though, is if we spread this out among five seasons, that we'll still be able to get all of our sports in just at different times of the year. Like, there's probably no way you could have football right now, starting in September. So that'd be pushed off to later in the year. Same with indoor sports, volleyball and basketball would be pushed off later on.
Great. Thank you so much. Jen, Jen and and Mike, maybe you could just speak from the perspective that you bring with the teachers. And I know I was saying this earlier in our steering committee meeting, which Mike also sits on. Mike, I know that you sit on the your task force as well. I think, Jen, you also sit on the task force too, do you not? Yeah, thank you. So thank you to both of you for going that extra step as well. But I know when Mike and I were talking on Thursday, he said, you know, I can see all kinds of opportunities here. I can see us doing all kinds of different things and we've learned so much through those those last couple of months at the end of the school year that, you know, I think we really want to stress that we've we've listened, we've heard, we've reflected and we've recrafted. So I don't know, Mike and Jen, is there anything that you'd want to offer along those lines?
I'll go first, Mike, and then if you're okay with that. I did want to get back, circle back to the Wednesdays and maybe Janine can jump in as well. With our breakout task force, we were curriculum and scheduling. And I do see that there's a lot of opportunities with that Wednesday time period where we can have check ins with our students. We can hold some office hours. We can even work with our paraprofessionals and have them join in and maybe they break out with a small group of students that they're working with during that time and then we can check in. And of course, the need for continuing learning for us as educators. And we are so excited to find new and innovative ways to instruct our students this way. I like what Steve said at the very beginning, that the spring was emergency teaching. And, you know, I just really want to reinforce to the community that's watching and that school committee members and my colleagues that that won't, that's not going to be this. We are ready to go. We are ready to take on this challenge and we're very excited to learn as educators. And I think there's a lot of connections that can be made with the remote learning model. And there's a lot of opportunity for some real positive, you know, one on one connections with students or small group connections. I did have a few of my students that I surveyed at the end of last year who said the remote learning model was the best thing that ever happened to me. And I I think that we have some voices out there that we can really embrace and hear what the students are thinking. So I just wanted to add that piece. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thanks, Jen. Mike, any thoughts on you?
Yeah, I mean, like I was saying earlier today to the district committee. And I think there's some really exciting opportunities here that we didn't necessarily have a chance to take advantage of in the springtime. But we know a lot more now and and envisioning how, I mean, my my classroom is centered around doing a lot of collaborative work. It be lab work, be small group work, sharing solutions to problems, things like that. And it's really hard to envision that sitting facing forward six feet apart. But it's really easy to see how I can implement that with with breakout rooms and such using the technology tools that we have and Jamboard and and Flipgrid and a number of other things that I can use. Even has me thinking, trying to think outside the box and thinking about, well, how do I really want to assess my students going forward and things like that as well? Given the new paradigm. So I think it really opens some interesting avenues to us.
Like we were saying earlier too, to the steering committee, in some ways, for those who are educators out there that are watching, in some ways, it sounds like flipping the classroom. Like, if you've done any research on that, that's almost what this is. And, you know, like Mike and I were talking earlier, and the bottom line is we can see that we can, you know, initially, when Steve and I were talking hybrid, for example, we were trying to think through the sciences and what would that look like? And how can you do a lab? Like, you know, there's something special about being in the lab, doing, you know, a lab experiment or whatnot. How do we do that online? And then as we started, as we started to go down this road, we started saying, well, wait a minute. We could bring in groups of students at a time. And, you know, because and I want to be really clear on this and I I have such faith in Rob Freeswick and his team. I don't have any concerns about the buildings. I know that there's, you know, still some discussion on the HVAC systems in all of our buildings. We have got somebody on contract that we are bringing in to do thorough analysis and we'll see what hopefully, again, we're looking at that to say, what else can we do to to make our air quality better? What is this going to look like? But our buildings are safe. So this is not saying that we don't think that our buildings are safe. We think the buildings are very safe. And so we're not trying to keep students out of the buildings, you know, but we are looking at bringing them in in planned, strategic, safe, thoughtful ways that we can have them take advantage of ongoing building of culture and building relationships and building friendships and that kind of thing without the rigidity of every six feet and facing only one way. So we are excited about that. I think Elaine mentioned that today in steering committee. It sounds like you're excited about it. It was kind of like in this really dark time, you know, you know what? Yeah, I think we are excited about this. I think that there's a lot of a lot of potential here, really, really do. So Steve, is there anything else? Do we miss anything? No? Okay. Okay, so I I'm not sure, Elaine, if you want to maybe, maybe we can just take a couple of really, really quick questions right now of these folks before we end up going into the 120 questions that you've got here. And she will get you in before we go to 120 questions.
Sure, sure. So first, I want to, I want to thank you for that presentation and all the information you already gave. I know that as school committee members, we tend to focus on the work that is left to do and what has not been done. But it's very clear how much work actually has been done and how much thought's gone into it. So thank you for that. I want to talk to the school committee members for one second here. We, our goal here is to thread a very tight needle. This is a very complicated situation. I don't think anybody denies that. And I want you guys to have as much information as you need in order to be able to approve a plan. But at the same time, there's no perfect information. There will never be enough information to really feel comfortable with this decision. It's just the nature of all of the global unknowns that we have in front of us. And so, like I said, I don't, I don't, I want you guys to ask your questions and we are going to go through that spreadsheet. I would like to focus on the high school discussion first, unless there's an objection to that. And try to try to keep our questions focused to that and if we can come to a resolution before we jump over to K to eight. And then we can talk about that separately, even though I totally understand that they're dependent. But I also want to be careful that we don't talk in circles for days about this because it would be so easy to do. It's so complicated and layered and nuanced. We, well, I'll speak for myself. I have been very frustrated that our state and national leaders have kind of left us in the lurch. They have not provided timely and clear guidance for us. And I know how that feels at our level. We do have a responsibility to provide direction to our superintendent, to our principals, to our families who are asking for time to plan. Principals need to build cohorts. There's so, there's so, so, so much work that needs to be done after we approve a plan and make a decision. And if we, again, I don't want to push anyone towards the towards the towards making a decision that they're not ready to make. And yet, this is our responsibility and I want you guys to think about that very carefully because a lot of people are waiting on us. So with that, yes, I can take quick questions for the team that's here now before we go into the spreadsheet, if you want. I do have a little bit of a technical issue because there's two pages of people. Some of my school committee members have jumped to the second page. And I don't have any ability to pin them to the top. So if you don't think you're going to be talking in this conversation, maybe turn your video off and hopefully that will filter you towards the bottom and I'll be able to keep track of my school committee members a little bit better that way. If I don't see you raise your hand, just pop it into the chat. So does, yeah, so does anybody have any questions for the people who presented here? I'll start with Leah, since I see you.
Just a question on process first, Elaine. I think that there are two tabs in the spreadsheet that are, I think, very high school specific. So but are most of those, are you thinking that most of those questions in the spreadsheet are Brooke questions?
So let me speak to that. So I think what we're looking at is if I I know that you all know what the questions are in the spreadsheet and we're going to head to the spreadsheet here shortly. But if anything new came out of what you heard tonight that you have a quick question of right now before we go to that. And if you don't, that's fine. We're going to push forward because we're going to want to go through all of those 120 questions.
Okay, I do have one that that is brand new. Shocking. So it's for Tanya. I wonder, in this new kind of quasi-model that we're still waiting to see if it's approved, is our goal to maintain all the levels of the sports, meaning varsity JV freshmen or JV one, JV two? Are you going to try to get the same kind of participation levels that you always have?
But right now, when we met last week, we definitely want varsity and we definitely want JV. And then there was talk around the JV two level and how many students actually bring together and what that would look like. But our goal is to definitely have a JV level and a varsity level if that is safe for us to do.
No, Amy?
No, go ahead. That's fine.
Very quick question. Zoom breakout rooms were mentioned. Does that mean that we will be using Zoom?
Todd can probably handle that one as well as anyone can.
We are certainly, and I mentioned this in the last school committee meeting, that we're certainly looking at and willing to provide both Google Meet and Zoom as two two way communication platforms of the district for both students and teachers.
But you also recall, Amy, that we said last time that we had concerns about the Chromebooks because the Chromebooks don't handle Zoom very well. And that's problematic for us. And the and the makers of the Chromebooks are no Zoom, actually, is it Zoom that's looking at creating a different app? I believe it is. So there's, there's work to do on that. It's not a natural, like, yes, we're going to definitely do it and it's going to be glitch free. We know and Zoom knows that We know and Zoom knows that there are issues here. So we're, we're hoping that we can get something. Hopefully by, you know, the start of the school year or just after. Okay, so if no more questions right now, be, oh, sorry, Mike, Mike had a question. Sorry Elaine.
Yeah, that's okay.
I just wanted to first thank the steering committee. Obviously, there's been a ton of thought and energy and creativity that went into the remote proposal and it, you know, it really does feel like we have developed a best case scenario for the remote model. And its development has been collaborative. It's been across levels. And you know, obviously it's taken inordinate amounts of time. So I really do appreciate that. One thing that I noticed in the presentation is that you know, last week was our first time having the remote, the full remote model being proposed. It was positive as a proposal. And as we, as we went through the presentation today, I saw a lot of areas that said areas of challenge for hybrid compared to opportunities and benefits of remote. And that happened on a few slides. And I'm wondering first, if there is in the works, any ideas of developing for equity's sake? Maybe a presentation that talks about areas of challenges for the remote model and opportunities and benefits for the hybrid model.
So Mike, are you asking us to create another presentation?
No, no, no. I'm asking, so, so this is, this is a presentation that seemed more like an endorsement of the remote model. Do we have a presentation that maybe offers why a hybrid model might, might be effective as well? Or are we?
My first thinking around that would be that that's what, that's what we did initially. Like before we ever even talked about for remote, because as Steve knows, I pushed back on full remote at the high school for. Yes, Mike, I see you smiling there. You know that I push, yes. For quite a while, I gave pushback on it and until I felt that we were at a point where we had to really push forward with it. So during that time, my, if you recall, Mike, we were, we were supporting. And in fact, one of you even mentioned in one of the questions here, you know, back at that point in time, did you think, like, one of the things that didn't come up tonight. But, but did come up at the last meeting was the whole third-party vendor. And some of the issues, because that's one of the places where we found ourselves struggling. And so I think that, you know, that was one of, one of the, for me, almost turning point where I wanted to say, wait, this doesn't, this just doesn't even make sense for us. You know, so I think that we had a number of those kinds of things coming along. And we continuously tried to move through the hybrid model till we got to the point where we said, this isn't really making sense for us anymore. So I, I guess what I'm saying is I think we did that before. Now, this is where we're at now. So in all, in all honesty, I think that's what you would want us to do. You'd want us to, to do our very best at the work that we were doing. And then, you know, come forward when we've got an issue. And that's us coming forward saying, we got an issue. So, you know, and I think the other thing too, Steve and I talked about timeframes. And I think we never want to lose sight that what our real goal is, is to be full return at some point in time with no precautions. Like that's the end goal, right? But we, we said, and it's interesting because in talking to a group of superintendents today, some of them are now actually thinking about rephasing some things and they're, where they were headed, kind of like us, where they were headed, a lot of them are coming up against the same issues, very same issues. That we came up against last week. I think it's just our planning was a little bit further ahead in some ways, like the depth of it. So you, you know, and I, I would love to give the example of my husband, that he's not, he's in the other room. But so for example, I was talking to him about the third-party vendors and I was complaining last week. That just doesn't feel good to me. And he said, well, we're, we're not talking about that yet. And I said, really? Because it's really problematic. He says, I don't think so. Sunday morning over coffee, he said, can we talk about third-party vendors? Because I'm finding it's a problem. Well, we did too. So I think you're finding some high schools now starting to come into that very thing. Saying, okay, not comfortable with this. Is there another way around it? So you're starting to see, according to some of the superintendents I was working with this morning, you're starting to see some more phased-in approaches. And I think we almost see this as a big phased-in approach. I don't know if that's a good way of explaining it, but a big phased-in approach. Because what we really want to do is say, like in our minds right now, if everything is really good, we're looking to that next semester. We're looking at the, you know, the end of January, early February, where are we going to be then? So this, this might just be a means to an end. Do you know what I mean? So, you know, we're, we're taking a positive stance here, hoping that the numbers are, remain really good or get better. And just, you know, and we can move on to that next phase.
Yeah. And Mike, I'll let you ask your follow-up question. Thanks for pinging me. But I do want to say, like, this is, the, the typical process is that they bring a recommendation. You know, the superintendent or whoever brings a recommendation to us and we can poke holes in it or, or we can support it. But it's not a buffet. They don't just bring all the options to us and then say, pick one. They're usually bringing a recommendation of what they want to do and it's our job to either approve it or, you know, not approve it. So, but go ahead.
Right. So that was sort of my follow-up question. Feels less like a, like a proposal of a, a new way of looking at it, more of like a, a steering committee endorsement. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, certainly our steering committee, again, just I know that there are folks watching tonight. And I just want to go back and reiterate that we have the three layers of groupings that are working right now, right? We've got the large steering committee and we met again today. We meet, we meet at least once a week that we've had a time or two where we've met twice a week. And then you've got that middle layer of different groupings that are working. And then you've got the task forces at the, at each school. So we try to keep track of everybody, like this, the broad steering committee kind of helps to oversee what all of the rest of the work is doing. So there are a lot of people involved. And I think if you took a look at the, you know, the, the comprehensive plan. They're all listed there at the, at the very top is where we do the acknowledgements to everybody who's had a role in this. So yes, I would say that our steering committee right now very much supports us moving forward with this.
All right. Who wants to go through a hundred and twenty questions on Excel?
Can I, Elaine, can I ask a very quick follow-up question?
Yeah.
Or it's not a follow-up, but it's really just a comment to Tanya earlier, saying that, that JV, the freshman level basically is maybe on the chopping block, block a little bit. But I bet that I just heard so many eighth grade parents' hearts break. Because they know that that is actually the thing that melds our three towns so well. So I would just ask, I know that this is a beast, but try to protect that. Even if it's just building those freshman teams to just scrimmage each other. But it helps bring those Neshoba kids together. It's what it, it did it for my son and all of his friends. He didn't know anybody from Bolton or Lancaster. And now he has friends across all three towns because of your amazing soccer program. So I just want to throw that out there.
Yep. I'll follow up. So right now, we only have about three hundred and forty students sign up for fall sports. So looking at it closely, we may not even have enough for those freshman teams. And a lot of times, you know, the volleyball freshman that'd be pushed off to later in the year, freshman football be pushed off to later in the year right now. So I think we're on the cusp of those bubbles. So, and if we didn't have a full freshman program, I would also keep our rosters as big as we could fit in a bus per se. Or you could have more kids where you could have one team go for a game and one, you know, some kids may stay back. So we could definitely work it out, you know, within our league to make it work. Because obviously we want as many kids playing as possible.
But let's keep in mind, we are still in the middle of a pandemic. So I just want to put that out there. So Tanya, there's no pressure here. Like we, we understand that we're in the middle of a pandemic. As I'm just wondering now, is Todd back yet? Todd, you and Chi, can you just, let's, I know that a question or two had come up before. And we, well, that's one of the reasons we asked Chi to just stop being quickly tonight and then we'll start with our questions. And I think one of the things, Chi, that folks were looking for, and Todd, maybe you can weigh in here, is the question about bandwidth and such. Do you want to just touch base on that, Todd, and kind of tee it up a little bit?
Yeah, last meeting, the, you know, the question was asked around, you know, in terms of being able to sustain two-way communication in all of our buildings. And so, you know, in terms of if, if we are, if we're, if we, if we are in a remote model or if we are in a, you know, an all back, all students are back in the building model, you know, there's no issue in regards to bandwidth. But when we're in sort of a hybrid model, we need to think about, you know, what that does to the bandwidth in all of our buildings. Because not only are we have a variety of students and, and teachers in the buildings working with bandwidth and two-way communication. We'll also be having a remote learning academy going on in all of those buildings and those remote learners. And so we have to take a look at what that means for bandwidth and, and the ability to, to continue two-way communication on a variety of platforms within the district when we are in a hybrid format. So Chi did a variety of research on what that looks like and what that will look like. You know, he did report out earlier today, steering committee, that, you know, if we are in full remote, you know, like we were the spring. The issue of bandwidth and the ability to communicate in two-way fashion is not an issue. Just as it's not an issue when we are, you know, all in, when all students are in the buildings. But he does have some things to report out on if we are in a hybrid model across a variety of schools in the district. So Chi, did you want to just update on that, please?
Okay, so, so regarding the hybrid mode, we reached out to all the principals. Just asked him to give us a kind of a worst-case scenario, meaning like how many concurrent video conferencing need in each building. So the feedback we got from each building is ranging from like two hundred to, you know, over five hundred. So based on that number, we did some calculation of the bandwidth we need. So there's two kinds of bandwidth. One is the internet connection. One is the connection between schools. So based on all the feedback for the worst-case scenario, we have to double or triple the connection between buildings. Meaning from each building to high school and also for the internet connection, we have to increase from to almost like eight, eight to ten times. So that's kind of where we are. And, you know, with, with that, you know, there's, of course, there's, there are going to be a huge cost increase. On top of that, I think the tricky part is, you know, we're in the middle of an agreement with Comcast, which is our service provider. And also, you know, we're in the middle of a E-rate, where are they start the E-rate for this year? So even Comcast agreed to break the current contract, you know, increase our bandwidth need. We still want to get some, we wouldn't get any help from the government through the E-rate program. Because, you know, so application for this year already passed. We will only get what we apply, you know, back in January. So those are the biggest concern for that.
Yeah, I don't think anybody saw this in January. Like really, you know.
Right. And on top of that, you know, if we do go with this hybrid mode, in order to support all this bandwidth increase. We have to upgrade a lot of the existing network equipment. And also on Comcast side, you know, they have to operate all their equipment in all buildings. So that is, you know, potentially a, a huge cost for them. So for them, you know, in order to operate everything, we don't know for sure, but it's hard to imagine, you know, they're going to allow us just, you know, get one or two months of service. I think they, in order to operate all their equipment, they're probably looking at some long-term, you know, contract. So those are the concerns.
Great. Thanks, Chi. Appreciate that. So Elaine, if you're okay, we can maybe start to move through our hundred and twenty questions.
Let's do it.
And I think what I'm going to do, if it's, if it's already been answered in our presentation, I'm just going to pass over it. Okay? So that, now if I miss something along the way, I, I know all of you well enough, you'll come back after and say, hey, but you missed this question or that or whatever. So I'm going to push through pretty quickly. And I did send an email to you earlier tonight to just say, if, if it's going to be something that is going to be. And I, and I want to stress this to, to our communities, if it's something that's going to be linked to any type of negotiations or like what we would call like discretionary negotiations right now, that we're going to be going into this week. I, I won't respond to it because I can't respond to it because it's part of a larger process. And this is one of those things that, again, one of the strange things about this time, this particular time period is we're pushing something forward, we're asking our school committee to approve it. And yet, and, and we're not the only ones, of course. This is right across Commonwealth. And yet, most everyone has not wrapped up their negotiations around this. I don't even know if I can think of one. I don't know. Mike and Jen might be able to tell me. Yeah, you can't probably think of one either. Because this is all kind of backwards to how it normally would work in life. And so we're in a kind of a strange place. And that's why when we talk about the document that we sent out to you, the comprehensive plan. We see that document as ever-evolving because there are going to be things that change. There's going to be new guidance that keeps coming up, especially in Jones world. I mean, there's always new guidance coming up. And, you know, that's going to have to be implemented in. If there are any changes that we have to make as a result of negotiations, that's going to have to be put in there. So the, the comprehensive plan from our perspective is kind of good as we put it out at that moment in time. So I want to be really, really clear on that. So there's some questions that you had in here that we won't respond to and that's going to be why. Like I said, I, I think a lot of things we've already kind of talked through. I won't read them. Yeah?
I was just going to say, we also tried to answer a variety of those that we could prior to the meeting in the right-hand column. So that we could, you know, that, in, in a lot of them, we did touch on in the last meeting, as well as in the comprehensive plan. You'll notice the one that I emailed out to the school committee earlier today. We definitely kept the high school remote piece kind of broad and, and sweeping generalizations. Knowing that you folks are going to make a recommendation and potentially a vote on that. So that we can then go back to the comprehensive document and add in the specificity that was given by the high school team tonight. So.
Yeah. And I think, Mike, there's probably, we're going to give more detail than we can put into the box. So my first reaction is probably not. We would have to come back and do it. So let, let's, let's just start. I think we actually responded to the, the, the first one.
I answered this, actually.
And the next one, how often will, will we conduct studies to determine if the model can or should change? I think there is a, there are a myriad of things that are at play, but it's not going to be one of those things that we'll be able to gauge in a week-by-week situation. And, and decide, yes, we, we can go forward. There'll be some things we can tweak right away, of course, but we'll be looking at a broader model than that. Amy?
I'm sorry, that first question had more to do with if the remote model is being recommended at the high school because there's more content delivery, then why isn't that considered for the other schools as well? So I don't think it has been answered.
Okay, then let me go after it another way, Todd. Let me go after it another way. I think Amy, from our perspective right now. It's not just about academic content for our elementary and middle school students. But academic content is huge at the high schools. We prep our students for college. So Steve, do you want to jump in on that as well?
Yeah, the high school curriculum offerings are really personalized in creating challenges for very limited cohorts. We've got such specialized classes, it makes it different at the high school, whereas we're not teaching just general English. We're teaching British literature or, or American literature, those type of things. So it is very different between the two schools.
The next one, if we start full remote at the high school and eventually find we're able to go to remote, how will we accommodate kids who want to remain full remote? I think we've got some time now that we, we can work that through. And I'm not sure what this is going to look like by that point in time. I think, I think we need to see how students respond to the, the model that we're implementing. I think that, you know, this is brand new. It's exciting. And I, I don't know that we would be able to give you a really good answer on that. So I think we need to play that out. Are the goals of the comprehensive plan in a prior, prioritized order? No, they're not really. I don't think, Todd, you didn't do that deliberately. Those are just goals we always talk about all the time. So I don't think that one is higher than the other.
There's no prioritization of, of, of those four. They certainly all carry the same weight as we move forward with our reopening.
Have you, are you willing to hire a dean for remote learning? At this, at this point in time, we are, it's, we're not in a position to talk about it tonight. But we, we are looking at something very different for the elementary, middle school piece than the high school piece. But we're not prepared tonight to talk about what that looks like. But we probably can lay it out because we've got some, we've had ongoing discussions with people. We're just waiting for that to flesh itself out. But certainly the notion of, are we looking at someone for like kind of spearheading or being a linchpin to it? Yes, we are. The answer is yes. If we go full remote and for example, busing costs are low, what happens to that unspent money? I think we're too soon to talk about that. No different than as we watched the tail end of last year. Because there were monies that we saved in some areas but spent more in others. And you just heard Chi talk about, for example, you know, we're going to have some increases, certainly with the I guess, is the software really Chi? I'm not sure exactly. You know, some of the infrastructure, we're, we're going to have to bump up. Would that be fair to say Chi? And, and so you're going to have more expenses in your world right now than we would have anticipated before.
Right. But bandwidth definitely is, is a big item. We'll have the increase. Second, a lot of the, a lot of the network we have to operate internally. Second, a lot of the, a lot of the network we have to operate internally. And also, uh, we have, uh, a plans like, uh, the device to monitor, um, to optimize the bandwidth. And also, uh, the content filter device, those device, uh, the network, network card on those device can only handle certain amount of traffic. And, uh, because with such huge increase, we have to upgrade all those device as well, and also those device. The cost is tied closely with all, how much data it can process. So being like a sunny's increased, like a triple or, you know, eight times, ten times more. The cost on those, uh, I'm still waiting for the code, but could be huge.
Okay, so, uh, just so that you know, so we might, there'll be some buckets that might be saved in one area, but expenditures in another. So we 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 don't have a magic ball right now, or crystal ball, to take a look and see what that looks like. Um, how can we, uh, take away choice for in-person learning for high school families? Um, I I don't know that we we've done that, we we've done some surveys, we've got another survey that's slated to go out tomorrow. Um, that will, and those surveys continually fuel us and and give us more information as we continue to move forward. Um, to what extent have, extent have the opinions of high school staff changed? Uh, Steve, do you wanna speak to that at all? Have they changed that much? Or Jen, maybe, I know that you and Mike were talking about that earlier.
Well, they, 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 the the N R E A did did a survey for teachers and and I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike and Jen. Uh, but I believe the majority of the teachers were more interested in the remote type thing because of of academics and safety as well, but I I. Switch on to those guys, they have something.
Yeah, that's, that's been true, we've done two surveys, um. They've been, uh, the proportions have been about the same, the last survey we did, we removed the option of the in-person. Which is only two percent, uh, twenty percent before, and so the proportion has stayed about the same, three to one.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, given the stability of the transmission numbers in the Commonwealth, why are we sending a different model of learning to our older students? This really didn't come, this didn't, and I hope you heard that tonight, this decision wasn't based just on transmission rates at all. We said this is really based more on academics and safety, it wasn't specific to transmission rates at all. Um, we seem to be able to choose between adhering to state guidelines, um, and I, I I think that. We had said earlier, and I just wanna put this out there again, that the the guidelines that we really have to pay the closest amount of attention to for in. Our world is gonna be the D E S E guidelines, because those are the guidelines that Kathy and I are going to have to sign off on. So those are critical, that we make sure that we are paying attention to those. Um, there's a lot of data points out there certainly, uh, but the D E S E is the the one that we have to pay the closest attention to. Um, the next one asked about criteria that that's used to upgrade or downgrade, the answer is being that it could be driven by COVID data and be, that's all true. If safely, um, is one of the reasons for beginning the school year remotely, shouldn't we rely on public health organizations? That, all of those organizations are all linked to the D E S E. The D E S E has a a collective group of twenty seven members that are all members of these various organizations. That help to feed whatever the D E S E guidelines become, so, uh, we would want you to know that all of those are represented in that. Um, how can we assume high school students won't comply with masks? We we don't. Honestly, we've got amazing kids in our district, and I don't think for one second that the kids weren't gonna comply with masks. Uh, you know, the mask policy, quite frankly, I don't think we we really thought, that was, that was no type of driver at at all. Um, regarding concern about cleaning desks between class, why can't high school students grab a Clorox wipe? Um, and wipe down their desk before they sit in them, I I would, my first reaction would be to tease and and I say this with all affection. But I don't even know if we can get Clorox wipes anymore, I think that they're still out of stock, and I think that they're not expected for, I think, a couple of months yet. Um, but the point that that's being made here, of course, is can our students clean everything down? And I think that, uh, you know, Rob would probably come in and say, well, actually, guidelines that he has office get, say that. It has to be done a certain way, so it's not something we would ever probably turn over to students to just wipe down their desk. Uh, because there are certain things, and there's dwell time that has to also be included with this, so we needed to keep that in mind, um, as well. Um, has there been talk about purchasing bifold plexiglass shields for desks? Rob, I think, I I'm hoping Rob is still on here, we've done, uh, some purchase of plexiglass throughout the district. Uh, do you wanna just talk about that for a minute? I'm assuming he's on page two.
Sure, yeah, we've, we've sourced, um, it's actually a local company out of Lemonster, um, that we're gonna. Um, purchase for cafeteria tables and also for teachers' desks and some portable units. So if the teachers need to have a one-on-one, um, you know, session with a student within the classroom, they, you know, they can pick up that. The portable one and move over and and, you know, engage with the student if they're having, you know, difficult time trying to understand something.
Thanks, uh, why can we not pursue purchasing or renting of tents, uh, why is it cost prohibitive? If there are state and federal monies that can be tapped, well, there are state and federal monies that can be tapped. But, um, some of that money is absolutely targeted and can't just be used for whatever, it has to be used very specifically. Because some of that money still comes in as targeted money where you have to write a grant for X. And that's all you can spend that money on, now, there's somebody that's been flowing through, um, you know, last month. And that really was for the purpose of offsetting the costs of things like P P E and, um. The the Chromebooks that we just purchased for the, you know, our younger kids and that kind of thing. Um, I wanna go back, because I think that we also brought up the tents, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was twenty five thousand dollars per tent. Um, for three months, and we would have to purchase one for each building, so that would be a total of, or each campus, right? So two, four, six, eight, we would be looking at eight at twenty five thousand dollars apiece for the three months. So it's a, it's, and I don't know that would it would offer us what we were, we would really be looking for. I don't know whether the cost would outweigh the benefits, I guess, is, and that's, I I think that that's how we, that's where we ultimately landed. If the high school does go fully remote, can we utilize that school space for like preschool and such, well, we've had that discussion, so it's a great question. Um, I think, uh, when we had that discussion as the elementary, uh, and middle school principals. I think our first reaction is that it it it's not a warm fuzzy building to walk into that, you know, you just can't wait to get your. Little grade twos in there, your kindergarten or your pre K, and, um, I think we'd rather keep them in their home buildings right now. In their own communities, and so that's why, uh, after discussion, we decided to just leave it as it is. And I know that Jones got a great plan for our pre K that I think, uh, I feel, I certainly feel very, very comfortable with. Um, I saw one school planned that had all teacher prep time during the first block of the day. Uh, Steve, did you do anything, um, standardized like that with prep time in your building?
We were looking at that with with within the remote and with the with the Wednesdays, um, the task force are looking at those. Try to work with the teachers to figure that out, and we're we're hopeful that we can use the the, um, the teachers that were really good at the, at the. Um, remote learning in in the spring to do some P D for the teachers that are that are struggling a little bit more with it, so, we're working on that as well.
Guys, that's, um, that's in reference to later start times for the kids.
Oh, okay, so actually, that's a great question as well, because we've had that conversation too, haven't we, Steve? And we couldn't agree with you more, and we're we're looking at saying, is this an opportunity for us to actually do this? And so, um, I I I think the high school staff would tell you that that's where we've landed, so you'll see a little bit later start in the day for our high school kids.
Especially with with less passing time and 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 lunch doesn't have to be four lunches, we can just do one half hour lunch, we can, we can. Go start later, get out right about the same time and still have more time on learning time in the in the classroom, so we've looked at that as well. Task force is still looking at that as well, that's why we put draft on these these schedules, because they're they're, they are drafts, we're still working towards those.
Well, that actually takes us right into the next question, because that's exactly right, these are all draft schedules right now. Until the decisions are made, it doesn't make any sense for us to continue to work at the schedules until we know exactly what we're doing. Uh, can you explain, uh, with aid of proposed schedules, exactly how the fully remote schedule would differ? I think you showed that tonight, so I think we're good, uh, number of hours per week per student, per class in the hybrid person? I don't, Steve, I think we, you didn't do it, you didn't break it down like that, I think you broke it down just in generalities, if memory serves me right.
You're correct, we, I mean, it it, just quick thinking, we're we're talking an eighty-five minute period, um, in a hybrid. And a about a twenty-five minute, um, synchronized thing would be about hundred and twenty-five minutes per, in hybrid. Whereas would be fifty minute periods, um, four days a week, which is two hundred and twenty-five minutes. Um, in-person synchronized type learning, so.
Thank you, if we go remote, can we bring in students in small pause? We talked about that, we've got a lot of different ideas going around, I I see Jen shaking her head in K D, yeah. So I think we've got a lot of really good ideas going around on that, I'm excited to see where that lands. Um, why do you feel that a hybrid start even a brief when it's not worth the perceived risk that would be? Again, it wasn't really about perceived risks, that's not really where our headspace was at at all. We were looking to do the very best for the academics and the safety, it wasn't, uh, we didn't really go down the road about perceived risks. Uh, similarly, we didn't really ever talk about money, in any of our conversations with any of our administrators. Did we ever have a conversation about it? We always, and I said this in in an email that I sent to you tonight, to to the school committee. We always keep kids first, always, and that's where we start from. Um, there's about the school adjusted later, yes, that we did that, um. Full, uh, so class, uh, uh, outside class and outdoor gatherings to see each other, yes, that you should have gotten that as well tonight. Through the presentation that the, uh, high school was talking about, because that that's ongoing discussion with that as well. Tagging on to, this sounds like an advisory, which is practiced at the middle schools. I I think, uh, so. I think is that, Leah, that might be your question, I'm not sure that I'm understanding that question. Are you just asking if we're looking at the potential for advisories at the high school level, is that what you were asking or no?
I think that Amy actually deleted the original, uh, line that was right above mine, but I think that what I said. Um, she was basically saying, will there, will there be kind of like a homeroom or a top, like, um, a designated adult? I know that in Hudson, we are gonna do this, so we have an advisory at the high school where I have, I'm in charge of ten kids. And so as we go into, if we go into a remote learning environment, um, it's just one more layer of adults. In addition to counselors and special educator liaisons and everyone else, it's another layer of adults that's there to check on them, interface with parents. So that's what it sounded like to me that she was describing, but perhaps your Wednesday ideas are moving in this direction?
Yeah, I I would say that that's, I think that you captured that correctly, that's exactly where we would like to see ourselves. So remember too, that we talked about advisory, maybe four years ago, I think, Jen, Matt, or Mike. I think the first time we started talking about advisors at the high school, so it's not something that discussion has not happened around for sure, yeah. Um, talking about the media's families, I I hope that, and will they have access to premiums and other support services? Yes, the answer is yes to that. Um, option for full in-person, no, the answer is no to that, but certainly meals, we're gonna run that just as we did through the summer. Um, students be admitted for in-person school support whenever they need it, regardless. Not whenever they need it in terms of, can you just walk into the high school? No, you, you, that's not gonna be able to happen, but can we be planned and thoughtful in in how we we bring, uh, groups of students in? Or individual students in, yes, we absolutely see that, uh, a place for that. Um. What will be available for non-sped students who are struggling? I think you've heard that through Jody's, um, efforts tonight. Have teachers been polled, uh, to see if they can accommodate a full return to school? With child, this is really expected of the whole childcare, and, you know, that continues, again, as a struggle right across the state, that's not specific to Neshoba. Um, you know, it is problematic for our teachers who've got little ones and, you know, uh, trying to find childcare when childcare isn't open. I don't think we have any answers for that, um, at this point in time. Um, what would in-class support look like for sped kids in a remote model? Um, I'm not sure, Joan, whether you'd have an answer on to that or or not. Uh, because certainly we've got some guidelines that have come out regarding that, maybe, I know that you've actually expressed this at another school committee meeting. But, um, clearly, I think you might wanna just s- speak to it again.
So if it's in regard to the high school, even during remote last year, we had, um, special ed power professionals. And teachers that were on, um, the remote learning sites, working with students. And each student had Google Classroom where they got academic supports, so they would be checking in with teachers. So kind of a co-taught model with powers and teachers, and, um, we use Google Classroom to check in with students. And we'll be continuing to do that.
Thank you, um, labs, we've spoken to that earlier, um, how would hands-on classes like culinary arts and pottery work in a remote model? I don't know that we've thought that through, I don't know if you've got any answers on that, Steve, or not.
Sorry, yes, we've we've really looked into that quite a bit, I I met with both the the music and art folks and and, um, some of the technology folks. And and we've got, um, the curriculum's been adjusted so that we can teach some of that, that type of thing. Uh, for example, um, Andy LeBlanc in the, in his wooden metal shops is looking to run some OSHA type courses within the, within the class. Um, so the kids can get sort of licensed in in that type thing, so we've done quite a bit of work on on adjusting coursework to make it work. Um, that's something we we're concerned with, absolutely.
Um, are we considering live recording of lessons, um, or the recordings are only in front of the classroom or the best? Well, that's not what we're looking at for the remote model, we're looking for synchronous, complete synchronous learning throughout. So I I'm hoping that that responds to that particular question, and if if I'm missing, uh, missing something there, feel free to. But we're not looking at recording, uh, right now for the, at the high school for this particular, um, remote model. If if the best way to offer the same amount of content to our students, regardless of which model they choose, is to livestream. Again, I think that, you know, there'll be some live streaming, um, I don't know that we're prepared to go into details on that. And again, that is also gonna have to tie into our negotiations, so I am going to not be able to say a whole lot on that.
Amy, did you have a question? You're on mute, though.
Yeah, I do, I, so now I'm really confused, because I thought the whole concept of the remote learning. Model involved live streaming classes, am I missing the basic concept?
Do a quick explanation, because perhaps I didn't explain that very well here.
I think it might be a matter of definition of live streaming and parsing it out.
That could be.
In what Brooke's talking about, what Amy's talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're we're just in a different document, Brooke, so, um, in terms of live streaming, um. You know, we're certainly working on two-way communication between, um, students at home and at school. Um, but in terms of live streaming, um, for those kids who are in school and those kids who are out of school at the same time synchronously. You know, we still continue to look at, um, what capabilities we have for bandwidth to be able to do those kinds of things. Um, and right now, you know, according to to Chi, uh, Su Chi, we don't have those capabilities. To livestream those kids in at the same time while they are hybrid, I mean, or remote, for those kids who are in class at the same time.
So in the remote model that is being recommended, is that what you're talking about? Uh, because I thought that, um, a teacher's gonna be teaching a class at the school and livestreaming it to. Students at home.
Yeah, so if so if students are on like a Zoom platform or a Google Meet platform, by all means, they can get into that teacher's classroom. If they are in their classroom and they are conducting a class, you know, just like it, if we were on here on Zoom or on Google Meet. They certainly can do that, yes.
Yeah, Amy, Zoom and live streaming, they're talking about two completely separate things, like.
All right.
I guess, I I guess I would need your specific definition of what livestream means to you, but I'll leave this to Chi in terms of technology.
So, and and I'm not sure, I I I don't wanna, I don't wanna get lost in weeds here either. So, yeah, I think, Amy, we we can talk offline if there's something else that we're we're missing here.
I think this probably will come up again in the K to eight discussion, though, so I'd like to keep this to high school now, but I have a feeling it'll come up later again.
Um, will there be any club, the other, next couple of questions we've answered, will there be clubs or sports offered? We're working on that, uh, to hopefully have something going. Um, and that's the next question as well. Uh, the next is a suggestion, um. Schedules be given out and timing matters, as soon as we can get the schedules done, they will be, um. And I said, the, at the, the last one with regards to the timeframe that we're looking at, uh, running the remote model at the high school. Until, uh, those, we're hoping to be able to go to that next level after the first semester. So, the, is that it? So I I didn't realize that there was another separate document here, did I cover everything under the first high school full remote? Yes or no?
Uh, I I think you did on that first tab, um, I think Todd was, I don't know what document Todd was actually talking about. Um, and it looks like Mrs. Dunshamont has something that she would like.
There, there are two eight, ten questions, two separate eight, ten questions documents that are out there, unfortunately.
Um, thank you, Eileen, maybe I could clarify for Amy, um, what it might look like in a high school classroom? It would look just like this, so I would be instructing my students, they would be as involved as we are here. Um, and we would. Um, and we would have an agenda. We'd have a um, a plan instruction for the day. We would have the opportunity to break off into small groups. And then we would come back together as a group. So that is our our idea in terms of. You know, teaching in this remote model. Does that help you understand it a little better?
It does, because in my mind, I was, I guess I made an assumption. I don't know if I'm the only one that did this, but. I'm thinking I'm probably not, that the remote model would be also allowing a. Camera to be on the teacher who's like writing on a. Part board in the classroom or or doing things like in the classroom that the students. I guess, I guess it's, it is the same thing. I'm just thinking about it differently. I so.
I think you'll see, Amy, with time, you know, and that's kind of what Mike and I were talking about the other day. There the. Teachers across the school district before we ever went into this uh, time period, we're trying all kinds of different strategies and different. Uh, tools and platforms and that you heard us talk of a school committee about the uh, the taste testing. Remember the. Laura, I remember we we had one at your school that was just lovely when. We had cheese and crackers, I remember, as we they were going around and showing all the different platforms and and such. And that's been happening in all our schools. So I think now what you're going to see is those teachers will be able to take some of that. And implement it into this kind of this kind of a world. So that's one of the reasons why it's exciting. Because it's going to open up doors for us that we never had opened before.
Absolutely. We can use so many ways to instruct where I can project. Even I can even project a short YouTube video clip and we can watch it together. And then we can break apart and we can discuss it. Um, and or I can project a slide. Um, there's so many ways now that we can work this together. In a way that feels like we're in a class, even though we're not physically in a class. And I think it's, there's a lot of opportunities there for some really great growth and learning in terms of that type of instruction.
So that did help. I I think um, to the extent that we can add these types of details. Into whatever um, is coming next, it would be helpful.
So I see that, so on the high school hybrid, um, I'm wondering, do you want, Elaine, do you want to keep doing the same approach like question, answer? Is that how you want to continue to do it? And do we maybe the ones that have the answers on the right-hand side, maybe we leave those because they've been answered rather than going through them all? Or what would you like to do?
Um, yeah, I do see the majority of these have written responses to them. Um, and I think that. Most of these are for the school committee's benefit. Um.
Elaine, can I interrupt you really quick?
I don't know. I haven't finished what I'm saying first, and then you can interrupt me.
Okay.
Um, I do think that um, a lot of these details will be beneficial to the community, whether they are added to the comprehensive plan or added to another FAQ document or whatever that looks like. Um, the details of things that have been decided and now need more detail to them. Um, those types of things should go out to the public. I don't necessarily think that we need to go through everything. That that's for the school committee right there that there's a where there's a written response.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, Leah, what did you want to say?
Um, I'm not totally sure that this format is working really well. We have a ton of people on here and I feel like um. I feel like we are like racing through these questions. They're not even being read. So people who can't see this document don't even know what the question is. And then so many of them are actually not being given answers. Meaning that you just don't know yet or you're not sure, but like I. I would like to, so for example, one of the questions that was posed earlier was. How often will we conduct a study to determine if the model should shift? So if I'm going to vote for the high school to go full remote, I think it's important for there to be an expiration date. Like, that's just one example. So, you know, so we're running through these questions and Brooke. Total respect to you. You're just the master here, but for you to just say, man, not really sure, next. Like, this doesn't feel like an authentic conversation. And so I just don't want to race past. Really important things that, you know, I put a lot of time dropping these questions in here. Um, and Todd just said that there might be two documents at work. That I'm not sure about what that's what's going on there. Um, I just don't want to race through this because that first tab is actually the crux of this. Like, that's the important part. So for example, Brooke, would you be willing to kind of identify or put expiration dates on these plans? Or are we just kind of gonna, you know, declare full remote? And then um, only when the community kind of requests it or what?
So I thought I did answer that. So let me go back and I'll I'll see if, and again, maybe you're right, because I worry about a hundred and twenty questions trying to get through everything. You're absolutely right. And so I'll, and and if you think I didn't answer, like, I understand about the one question that you're saying, because I didn't come out and say. But in, I I guess I'm looking and saying, we've said that we would do this, the remote plan for like the first semester. And so and I'd said that I wouldn't want to be checking on it like every single week and doing a full survey because that doesn't make sense. But it would make sense to touch base with it all, you know, I mean, I can see doing uh, touch base moments with our staff, like that kind of thing happening all the time. You know, I can see Steve in his meetings. Having that as a general, you know, theme as as they're working through. I can see teaching and learning. Taking a different lens from their perspective. But do I think that the superintendent should go and do a check-in every week? I'm not so sure that that needs to happen. And I think you're looking at a short timeframe when you're saying September, October, November, December. You've got four months basically there, right? Uh, before the kids go into exams and that kind of thing. So I I don't know that you'd want to do a check-in. Like, from my lens, all the time, but I can see our other groups doing those check-ins or the administration doing the check-ins. But not necessarily a full, you know, I can see a community check-in maybe halfway through saying, okay, how do you think it's going, you know? And then maybe at the end, okay, how did that work? You know, I can see doing that kind of thing.
So the only, the only reason why I bring it up is because if we're going to check in in January. January is where we think, right? Like, January is not the time where we're probably going to go hybrid. So I think it's important for the community to understand and for us to understand that if we're voting for remote right now. For the high school, it feels like that's for the year. If we're checking in at semester points.
See, I'm taking a higher road, but maybe that is that Pollyanna moment. I I would love to think that we would be able to go to a hybrid model in in January. If the trajectory, if the numbers are there, if they're. I don't know whether that's where we're going to be, though. That's the truth. None of us know. Like, we just don't have that crystal ball right now to tell us, you know?
Yeah, I mean, remember what I said, we are trying to thread a really tight needle here. There's a lot of questions we just can't answer. Nobody knows what the trajectory of this virus is going to be. Um, and so. I know we need good information. We can't have the best information. It doesn't exist. And we could slow down and answer every one of these conversations, every one of these questions in a full conversation. But it would take weeks to do that. And our families need to plan and our principals need to plan. Um, and so we really got to balance that. If there's a difference, if you want to cut out a bunch of these questions, um, feel free, we could do it that way. Um, but remember, we're, we are supposed to talk not just about the high school, but also about K to hate, K to eight here. Um, and. It's the nature of this beast, of this pandemic, of this emergency, that there is way too much information and way too much complexity and just not enough. Time to deal with it in a comfortable way.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. That's well said.
I would just go on the record as saying, I think that um, it should have a sunset clause. I really do. I think that most of the schools that are going full remote to start. Have said for quarter one or for until October fifteenth, or I'm just throwing it out there for when we form our motion later. Um, that I believe there should be a sunset clause.
So.
Point taken.
I, you you're not thinking January is the time for the sunset clause?
I don't know.
All right.
I'm.
Points taken. I'm going to go to Steve.
Um, Madam Chair, uh, I think the only thing we really have to be absolutely uh, secure in at this point in time is the ambiguity of the entire situation. We really have no idea what's going to happen. After all, we were told that this thing is going to disappear in the warm weather. And it has not disappeared in the warm weather. And I unfortunately, not only the. Local leadership, but the national leadership on on the entire uh. Path of of this situation is just absolutely uh. Non, non, a non-starter. So trying right now to put a a. Drop dead or a sunset date on this, I think uh, is really uh, kind of foolish. And I think what we need to do. Is we need to periodically, and I think we can trust uh, the administration because no one likes what we're doing now. It's not going to be, it's not a long-term program. But no one likes what we're doing now. And I think that basically. They have to watch the situation periodically and just say, all right, we're going to go with this for another month. We're going to go with this for another six weeks, eight weeks and see what's going to happen. The the one thing we don't know is what we don't know. And that's uh, that's part of the problem of of trying to deal with a totally ambiguous and. Ambiguous, whatever it is, a totally ambiguity status situation that we have right now.
And I think for me, thank you, Steve. And I think for me, like, one of the problems I have, and I'm not being negative with all due respect. To the all the questions, because I think that they're all really important, but it doesn't give me a chance to hear from you. And you know, that that concerns me because I'd real, I really like to have, so hear some discussion from our school committee members. So I just want to put that on the table, too, that that's a concern. And so for me, I'd rather get through the questions super quick because I'd really like to hear what you have to say. So I'll put that on the table, but that's just a, that's just a me thing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we we created the spreadsheet originally because. School committee members had too many questions that just couldn't be answered in a meeting format, um, because it would take too long. Um, and so I feel like we are kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Um, because don't like the the volume of questions in a spreadsheet and having to go through them quickly. But you also want to have rich discussion around everything. Um, so I'll take Amy and Mike. Um, and then I think I'm going to poll everybody to see what is the information that you really need regarding the high school that hasn't been discussed yet. Um, and to see if we can get those specifics out there, um, and everything else we can put till later. All right, so Mike, go ahead.
Um, just to Leah's point, um. I I think the the format of this is a little bit, a little bit kludgy, I agree. And I think the risk that we run by kind of blasting through these questions. Suggests that there are very straightforward, easy answers, when in reality, there are not easy answers to these questions. Um, we could elaborate. As you said, um, Elaine, we could elaborate for ten, twenty minutes, an hour on some of these questions. So I just think that the 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 risk that we run is suggesting that. We can quickly sort of evaluate and say, here's the answer, and it can almost seem dismissive. So we just have to be really, really careful that we're not being dismissive of these. Really important and and well-thought-out questions from both the school committee members and from our constituents. I mean, they they need to be heard from as well. So no question there, just a, just a sort of an agreement with Ms. Burrito that um. We we're just going at a high clip.
Okay, Amy.
Um, yeah, I I did have some questions on there that. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we do address. Um, because one of my biggest concerns with doing the remote model at the high school. Is making sure that we are providing enough opportunities. For um, students to get to know their teachers or teachers to get to know their students. And um, supporting them if they're going to be at home every day. Logging into Google Classroom or Google Meet or whatever platform it is. That we have regular planned. Opportunities for them to. Somehow come to the school in person. Athletics addressed one of those opportunities, but if you have a kid that doesn't play sports. What is left for them? And that that's why I I was, I had asked a question, and I think this is the one that Leah said. Got deleted, but honestly, I couldn't figure it out because we were going so quickly. Um, that asked about rotating every student into the building. Um, I I know it sounds like you're kind of proposing um, using your Wednesdays for checking in with students. In this capacity, but I I read about one school and I I can't find my, the line with the details, but it was basically like bringing freshmen in two times a week and every other class. One time a week in small pods so that they could meet with their. Um, guidance counselor or support person, whoever it is. And and if that's not possible, I get it, but I just want to make sure that. We are. Building that into a remote plan, especially if it's going to be going for the whole year. Um, that that's really my biggest. Concern with the remote plan.
And and I think that Amy, just to to tag on to that just really quickly, I think we really need the decisions made so that we can continue to push forward. And continue to plan, um, because it is hard for us right now because we are still planning late. Well, not the three models anymore, but this, well, actually three models, but just not the return model. And it's a lot of work and we're really looking forward to knowing where we put all of our energies. And then we can go back and work the fine details.
I I I appreciate all the work. I I um, all the task force that you have have done. I know that I'm responsible for a lot of the questions in that spreadsheet. So um, I don't know if an apology is necessary or not, but you know, I really did put, I spent a lot of time thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so many aspects of how this would affect our students, our teachers. And the other piece that um, I had a question on that was. Not answered. To my satisfaction, anyway, is regarding um. Input from our community, from students. I I'm not sure that we've heard anything. Um, formally from students. Maybe I I maybe the task force have done something to. Um, formally ask for student students' input, but I'm not aware of it. And then um, I guess the other thing I'm really struggling with is how we make this decision. If the survey that we sent out showed majority supporting a hybrid model.
It wasn't a large majority. I think it was a percentage point or two. I can I can I just suggest something, though, Amy, that to to keep in the back of your mind when. Um, and I know that we have said this before. That any like our, when you talk about the children, you know, and and I think keep in mind, too, I was a high school teacher, so like. I love high school kids. I have high school teacher, high school principal, so I love high school kids. Um. So this is nothing to do with that, but in this particular situation. Our own state organizations, M A S C and M A S S. Were hesitant to help to make this decision and really looked at the other to say, well, perhaps you can make that decision. It will be, so. Even the at the top of our organizations, this is a really weighty decision to make. And you know, I I feel, I feel badly that we are all in this position right now. Having to make such a weighty decision, like when when you take a look at the emails that you you've been given and. You read through and you know how polarizing it is. It's it's, it's really tough. And I think what would really hurt is if. The students, for example, came back and said, let's say we pulled them and they said, okay, well, we all want X. This is what we want. But we would have to come back and say, you know what? That's, we don't know if we can do that. I think it would put us in a. In an odd place that I don't think would be fair to the students. And I'm just saying, this particular decision has so much weight to it. We really want to handle it carefully and cautiously. Just it just my food for thought. But I'd be the first person to say, where students could have voice, they should have voice.
Uh, hey, Kathy has a question or a comment.
Well, I I think it's more of a comment. I think, um, and I hear the the concern that that Amy is raising. Um, a new um, detail that we were provided with. Um, tonight that um, Jody spoke very eloquently, too. Was about the student support center and the uh, the the checking in with students. Regarding how they were doing, resiliency. And I know that there is a whole. Um, there's. um, there's several factors that they are checking in on. And she did, that is a way of getting the student's voice about how they're doing. I, I think that in terms of setting up the structure for learning, um, that is within the, the purview of the superintendent and the leadership team. And there are some things that I have heard talked about in terms of school being able to start a, a little bit later. But it was very, um, um, heartening to hear the efforts that are being made to check in with students, personalize their experience, really understand. And, and also, you know, there was such a negative view of the, you know, the, the emergency move to remote. I don't know, I certainly was not aware of the extent to which there was all this individual outreach and, uh, support for students, special education students and non-special education students, to help them with some of their social and emotional issues. So, um, to me, this is, it, it really provides a lot of balance to the remote approach. And it also was gratifying to know it was going to happen in any event. But now that it is, to use Brooks' word, nimble enough to be applied to a remote model, I think is, is really important to focus on so that, that kids are being monitored and there is individual outreach and the things that Jen described about what will go on on Wednesdays. Uh, for me, they're, they're very important characteristics of the remote model that's being proposed.
Um, okay, this is what I'm going to propose without, without objection, that we sort of put the spreadsheet aside. I'm gonna go round robin to everyone. Um, there's a lot of people that haven't spoken yet, and I want to give them a chance to speak or ask questions or make a comment as well. Um, I want to go round robin, limit it to two. One question, one comment, two questions, I don't care. But try to limit it to two and we will keep going around like that to make sure that everybody is getting a word in, in edgewise here and that we can perhaps make it more of a discussion and conversation rather than going fast through a spreadsheet of questions, most of which regarding the high school anyway, um, do have answers in, written in the spreadsheet. So I'm gonna start with Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no questions. I have but one comment and I will make it very brief. Um, I'm just gonna quote the bard, "When I say it is to be done, tis best to be done quickly." I know it's a paraphrase of Macbeth, but I think the superintendent and the principal need our direction and need it quickly. I'm prepared to move forward with this this evening in a positive vote in favor of the full remote at the high school. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Um, so I, I did write a list to make sure I didn't forget anybody here today and it's by town, so I'm gonna go to Kathy next.
Um, yeah, I would echo what Joe has just said, that, um, I, I, I am just, um, so impressed with the work that has been done to flesh out this idea of remote model. But it was very helpful because I know in people's minds, what, of course, they were relating to was what happened in March when somebody said, you know, uh, they, the, somebody pulled the fire alarm, we had to evacuate the building and it was off to the races. To me, it's very well thought out. I like the daily contact, the adherence to a, uh, as much of a regular schedule as we can. Um, I think, um, the work that's being done for athletics and which I'm assuming will be done, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, to try to, um, have the same be true of other clubs and organizations, um, really is a good model for kids. Everybody wants normal. I want normal. Um, we can't have it. But I worry looking at a hybrid model that kids, it, it creates more isolation for the kids. There's a plan to bring them in as need be. Um, this is an incredible group of educators. Every kid feels connected to somebody in the building. The leadership team at the high school is inclusive of teachers and their school council. Um, and, and I would piggyback on what Joe says. I would like to, to be able to come to a decision tonight so people can start to work on, um, the fine points of the questions. But I'm very, very impressed and grateful for the amount of work that has been done to date on this. And, um, again, there are, you know, you can get the student's voice, voice through asking them and having them vote. But I like this idea that on a regular basis, they're checked in about their social and emotional lives as well as other things. And, and that is something that I know has been in the works for a long time. And if, if it can come about, um, uh, in this model, I think it's, it's, it's worth pursuing.
My, thank you, Kathy. I'm gonna go to Brett next.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay. All right, to Rich.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair. Uh, I guess my, my one comment is I, I tend to trust subject matter experts because this is such a complex issue and we can only make the best decision with the, the amount of information that we have at that time. Uh, so I, I'd just like to assert my trust in the administration to do their jobs professionally and, you know, with the right moral compass. So, um, I believe that. Uh, so my one question is, with, with respect to the rationale for the high school going fully remote, is was part of your concern, I, I think, I think I heard you say that it was all about the kids, but part of my concern is the communities too, right? So when I look at the high school, that's the one place all three communities come together and mix, right? So if you're gonna have an outbreak that could potentially infect other towns, it's gonna be at the high school, right? Other sporting events, other things are, are smaller. That's my opinion. Um, so I was wondering how much of that was, was a factor in this? Because if, um, if you do keep the high school remote and then, that, you know, that, that say the Stowe Middle School has an outbreak or something, that doesn't disrupt the operations of, or, or get anybody infected potentially in, in Lancaster or Bolton. And so, I mean, I, I don't know of how big a consideration that was, but I thought that's a pretty thoughtful perspective if that was considered, so.
Well, actually, Rich, that, that's a great point. And I think John Corral did a really nice job tonight explaining that because, you know, when those kids come in, like, let's say to a Bio20 class, you're gonna have kids of all different age groups. And then those kids are gonna spill off and go back to whatever grade groupings they came from, whether it's grade 10 or 11 or 12. And there's a potential for one class to basically affect 100, right? And then those 100, you're right, those 100 leave and go off to the three communities. You're absolutely right. Was it a driving factor? I don't think it was a driving factor, but there were all these other, other factors that came into play as well when we had the discussion. It wasn't the driving factor, but we certainly were well aware of it.
Okay, thanks very much. And I guess I'd echo Joe Gleason's comments too. Um, I'm, I'm ready to make a decision and support the plan, at least for the high school.
Okay, thank you. Um, Leah, before I get back to you, I'm gonna go to Mary because she also hasn't said anything tonight.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go back to something that Brooke talked about and we got to M A S E and M A S S, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And the fact that they were each pointing, you know, to the other that, that should make a decision points out how difficult this is for, for all of us because most of us have been trained now and some will be soon as, as school committee members. And part of the, the, the training and the protocols talks about the fact that they, we have specific roles and responsibility. And the administration, our superintendent, one of the, we have three, three realms where we have, say, one is hiring and if any, but not gonna fire her, but hiring or firing us, the superintendent. The second is policy and the third is budget. And that's it. That's, those are our areas. We, for the most part, are taught to be hands-off in terms of administration. And perhaps because I come from an educational background, I, my doctorate in education, I have studied school committees and superintendents, been a principal, um, a district curriculum director. Um, and so usually it's much more clear-cut that this is administration and this would be school committee. But this is a little hazier, however. I agree, and I think it was Rich who said it and other people have said it. We hire educational experts and that's our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, um, our leadership team, our principals, and they are, as Rich was saying, they are the subject matter experts. Now, there are a number of us who happen to be in education. And I would also say, thank goodness, not, not all of us on school committee are in education because what we need is a broad representation of our constituents. Now, we want to hear from constituents and believe me, we have, we've, we've read people's, as Brooke said, really well-expressed opinions and reasons that they would talk about remote or talk about hybrid. And we take that in. Now, to my way of thinking, that doesn't mean that we talk about every single question that, that our constituents have asked, especially if they've been answered in some place. Our job is to look at research, um, best practices, um, our, our community responses and budget. That's how we make decisions. I am ready to make a decision. I, I am in support of the administration. Um, they have done, and with the steering committees, with all, and, and I do sit on the SEL work group for the Florence Sawyer School, so I have that window into that. And so impressed as I've looked at what the district has done, but also what the schools are doing in terms of incorporating social and emotional learning, which goes hand in glove with academics because that's how our students learn. So for, I think the overriding concern of so many people that they be able to plan and starting with our administration and principals and teachers, plan what is this going to look like? And also for our families, as we can see it right now, I, I'm ready to vote and to support the administration tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I just have two things to say. Number one, we have 36 days before school opens. Number two, I am in favor of voting this evening and giving Brooke a vote of confidence that not only have they done an excellent job, but I am assuming that they will continue to do an excellent job in preparing for this totally unexpected situation.
All right, thank you, Steve. Yes, school starts in, what'd you say, 36 days?
Thirty-six days.
Thirty-six days. Our teachers return three weeks from today. Um, all right, Leah, your turn.
Oh, um, so I guess my only concern with going remote, right? I've, I've got like my scales going and I'm sure every parent does. I am still really, really worried about the social isolation. It's not something that I spend a lot of time thinking about in my everyday life, but as I look at broader schemes, I'm really worried about it. And so that's why I brought up the athletics earlier. It's something that we need to pay attention to. Anytime we can get kids together, keep them outdoors, um, like snowman-making contests. I don't care what it is, but if we're gonna move toward this remote scenario with high schoolers, I know this so well. And by the way, Rich, if Nico gets sick at Hale, he's giving it to Roman and then Roman's bringing it to the high school. So I feel like, you know, we're all one big organism, even though we're three separate towns. Um, but the three separate towns do work very independently until the ninth grade. And one of the things that we heard time after time after time on these emails, hundreds of them, is from ninth-grade parents, incoming ninth-grade parents. And I feel that because they didn't get to go to DC, so they've been already, so many bonding experiences have been taken from these kids. A lot of them are peeling off to other schools, so some kids really need new friends. Um, a lot of kids are excited to meet the other schools because that gives them new opportunities. They want to join clubs. I know that Arunachoba kids, with the help of our amazing parents, are gonna continue to prosper academically. I feel it in my heart. I don't feel that way about every city and town, but I know that we're gonna do that. It's about the social isolation that I know you guys feel so strongly about and Todd, you've made it your mission, that I really want to push farther on and just really make sure that that is a huge priority.
Brooke, did you or Todd want to respond to that?
I, I, I think that you're absolutely right. I think that we see that, um, as we, as we started laying out this vision, that was, that was a big piece for us, Leah. And that's why you heard tonight talking about, you know, we've gotta get those freshmen in here. And, you know, as I said, Steve was texting me, can we bring in 20 a bus? Well, no, we can't bring 20 a bus in, but we can bring, I don't know, maybe six buses in of like, seven kids at a time or whatever this looks like, you know, as they're mapping out. And, you know, Tony and I had spoken earlier about, you know, well, what does it look like to tra, transport kids through the, the athletics and, you know, we talked about like, can we add tutorial time here? Can we do like, so to be, like, we had this whole academic, like, once we kind of got over, okay, this is really where we want to go academically, then it was, okay, now what exa, I thought Mary did a beautiful job. The hand in glove, okay, now what fits into this and how do we deal with this and make it for that whole child? Because that's still what we aim for, is the development of that whole child. And, and in me, there's also a piece of, okay, so we're dealing with a whole child, but then I'm looking at that school saying, how does that fit in with, with building school culture? And so I, we've had all these kinds of discussions. So honestly, Leah, I would want you to know, it's like right there at the front of our thinking. It's not a backseat thing. It's like right here at the front of our thinking. I don't know if Todd, if you'd, did I cover that, uh, is exactly enough?
Leah, I said too. So if you would like to ask something else or say anything else, you are welcome to. Go ahead.
I have nothing else, other than to say, I concur. You guys are like just working your tails off and you are the educational experts and I do trust your judgment.
Hi, thank you. Mike, you're up.
Um, I'm gonna agree with a lot of what my colleague said to start off. Um, I agree that a tremendous amount of work and effort is put into this. I agree that, um, we need to defer to our experts and our, our committees that are composed of a variety of, of, uh, roles, individuals, members. Um, I, because some of my colleagues didn't have much to say, I'm, if, if it's okay, if it pleases the chair, I'm gonna make one comment and ask two questions.
All right. Always pushing.
Well, I'm just pulling a Ms. Burrito, that's all.
You can take my question, Mike.
Thank you.
I only had one.
My, um, my initial instinct when we talked about remote model, uh, excuse me, remote, um, learning, a fully remote model, is that I, I fear that we are beginning the process of normalizing virtual everything, virtual communities, virtual cohorts, virtual intervention, virtual connections, virtual supports, virtual colleagues, et cetera. Um, and with so much time and energy invested in the remote model, my broader fear is that the value of human-to-human interaction is slowly being replaced and accepted by representations, not out of neglect, uh, not because it might seem easier to the untrained eye, but because of habit, because of the, um, the, al- al- almost a sunk cost effect. Sorry, she's feeding information. Um, to illustrate that, we talked about how we will allow for, uh, sped supports. And, um, we were told that we would get, um, these supports remotely. And that, to me, seems, it, it seems insufficient. It, it feels like it would not only leave our district vulnerable, it leaves the kids vulnerable. Rather than having these close interactions, because I, I mean, as a teacher, I, I see the work that sped teachers do and I see how they interact with students and there's just no replacing that direct interaction. And I get that we have to choose one or the other. I just have a fear that, um, we are virtualizing our kids' worlds. And, and again, that frightens me. Um, that, that was my comment. Um, my first question has a bit of a lead-up. Um, there has There has been a lot of discussion tonight about safety and not knowing. And I just want to share a little bit with what I've been sharing with my community members for the past three or four weeks. To be clear, our current state numbers, and I realize that superintendent said we have to go by Desi's data, but remember that Desi defers to CDC and we already had a citizen comment referring to CDC numbers and physicians. But our current numbers tell us that in an absolute sense, our positive test rates have never been lower than they are right now. And they've stayed there. They've stayed there for eight weeks. Now, we might not know where we're going, to allude to Steve's comment, we might not know where we're going, but we know exactly where we are. And part of data analysis is extrapolation. It's fair and safe extrapolation. And so we are in this place where I would consider as as safe as we're going to get, effectively a baseline. And we ought to take advantage of that safety and bring our kids back and get some of that authentic interaction back, going back to my 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 virtual reality comment a few minutes ago. We're down ninety four percent since our peak. And again, they probably represent a baseline. Those numbers have not been talked about or considered when we talk about the apparent safety and the concerns for safety in a hybrid model and the return of students to the classroom, or the concerns that would necessitate a remote model. We're not talking about numbers. We're talking about safety, but we're not referring to numbers. We also seem to be disregarding the July twenty twenty family survey data. I look back at that data, slide number four, said that seventy six percent of parents favored the hybrid model a month ago. We don't know where they are today. We're actually issuing a survey, from what I understand, tomorrow, which presumably is coming after today's vote. So that concerns me. I don't know if it's oversight, but we didn't see student data, right? Student data has to be part of our conversation. They're the ones that are being impacted by this, about their preferences, about the kind of return. So my broader concern is that we have decisions that are being made in the absence of a conversation about data. We're not using data, or we're not at least communicating that we're using data to inform our decisions for the fall. And we're not using it to inform us on what basis we will have to pivot from one model to another. And so my question is, if we're not explicitly sharing and utilizing data with our town, with our schools, with our community, how can we justify any change, current or future, if it's not on the basis of direct state or community derived data? In the absence of data, how can we possibly justify that move?
So, Eileen, I think Joan wants to respond to the sped component. And Joan, if you want to just weigh in on that quickly?
Sure. So, Mike, I hear your concerns about special ed. And I think that regardless of what the vote is in terms of remote, that we are still bringing students into the high school for services. So I want to be really clear that we have spent an inordinate amount of time identifying students that are high needs, that Desi has prescribed to us, you know, duly identified special ed ELLO children that are special needs that struggled with remote. Katie and I have spent days identifying who those students are. And we spent a lot of time talking today of how else creatively can we provide an environment of support so they're getting direct teacher content? So I just wanted to respond to that because I don't want the community to think that our special ed students are gonna suddenly all be remote. I don't think that that is what Desi expects. And I think Brooke has said all along that we're gonna be running a model that is kind of within whatever model is, you know, voted upon. Because special ed has different per- perimeters placed on that. So I just wanted to respond to that a little bit.
So, sorry, just to just to kind of clarify, does that mean our moderate needs special ed kids too? Is like kids on IEPs and five oh fours will get that direct support? Or will they have that remote support in a fully?
So I think, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
I was gonna say, we're still awaiting guidance from that as well. So would that be correct, Joan? I don't think that that has been, that has been definitive yet.
I think for kids that have a lot of pullout services, we need to really look at how can we effectively teach them? So we have prescriptive classes at the high school that I think, to a degree, we need to run. Students on five oh fours, it's really accommodations and what accommodations will they need? It's not modification of content. So I see that a little bit differently. And I think we work with guidance and look at the five oh four plans. And we talk with our teachers about what are those accommodations and how are they delivered in a remote format?
Did you want to speak to the the broader question about data?
So from from my lens, Mike, I hear you. And certainly you share some of your data points with me as well. But at the end of the day, we don't generally make the decision, Nishoba alone, on whatever perceived data points we had, although our backs were against the wall in March thirteenth area, right? Which is when we kind of went, kind of went rogue a little bit for, you know. But that was because, if you want to speak about data, we had, I believe, the first COVID case in a school. And so that started to to drive us a little bit differently. But overwhelmingly, it's not up to like every school district on its own to pick up its own data points and just make the decisions based on those. We we do get guidance from the state. You're you're absolutely right.
And we get guidance from the state, and yet when we look at the spreadsheet that was that was shared with us, some schools are going back fully remote, some are hybrid, and some might be in person. So there is some autonomy there. And I think.
For us as well, right now, for us as well.
Right. So so I guess my concern is, when when does the, when does the data become such that we can make a decision on it? And when when do we say, thank you, but no, thank you? I think there's a blurry line there that we kind of dance around. And I've been kind of searching for an understanding of that for a while now. And I don't know if there's questions.
I was just gonna say, I don't know if there is a concrete answer on that. Because again, this is also huge and with so many unknowns. And it's hard to live in ambiguity. Like for me, it was like, you know, black and white, I don't like this gray area at all. Like, I'll be the first person to say that.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, that's that's precisely why, as a scientist, I go right to the data. That's my first, that's my first goal. It's objective and it's and it's and it's direct and it's unbiased, if it's presented correctly. My third and last question, and thank you for everyone's patience. I'm sorry, I'm kind of going on a bit of a rant here. When I stop and think about a fully remote model and a student engaging in a lesson in a remote model, and when I close my eyes and I think about that, and what I'm speculating, what most of us think of, is a student that wakes up at eight o'clock, has a breakfast at nine o'clock, they will sit down, they'll take their laptop, they will connect with their class for however long. They'll receive, work on and process their work in a in an appropriate environment, a quiet supportive environment. Maybe there's a parent that's around that checks in every once in a while. Maybe they have their own space. And I think that's that's where I am happiest thinking of the remote model. But my experience tells me that that's really not the case. The student that engages in a remote model never, almost never, experiences an ideal situation. So I I guess my question goes back to Leah's concern about this tendency for the remote model to both isolate kids and to sterilize their learning environment. What do we do for those students for whom the remote model forces them to learn under conditions that are less than ideal, sometimes and oftentimes far less than ideal? And yes, those conditions do exist for members of our community, whether the limitations are technologically based, support based, or environmentally based. How will our intervention services differ from from my lens and in my district, inadequate intervention services? I don't want to see any more kids fall off a mental health cliff. And they can't be reached, they can't be brought back, and parents are at a loss. We can't connect with them because we're doing this all remotely. And there's only so many times we can try to call them or or meet up on a Google chat. I just feel like we need to be having a very deep conversation about what do we do for those kids who we're not, we're not, most of us are probably not really thinking about in this idealized remote model.
So, so Mike, I would respectfully disagree with that because I think that you you heard tonight how much energy we are putting into that and how much we did before. And we openly said, and even though we put a lot of energy into it before, we openly said, but we've learned stuff. I heard Jody say that, you know, you heard both Jody and and Katie talk about it. You heard Steve talk about it. You know, you heard John talk about it. I think that we've, so I hear what you're saying, but I respectfully have to disagree with you because we have put a lot of thought into this.
I'm not saying that we we have not have not thought about it. What I'm saying is, I think this is a, an issue that is oftentimes beyond the ability to plan for in a in a remote model. It it just is. And I don't know, as a district, how we solve that. So we can connect, right? My my whole, the theme of everything that I've been talking about is connection, right? That's at the core of learning and the core of teaching. How do we keep all of our kids connected? And again, I don't know that there are answers. I just feel like it needs to be emphasized. And maybe my question is rhetorical, and maybe we can agree to disagree. I just feel like that's something that we really need to consider and we really need to be thoughtful about.
And I think we would agree with you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right, Amy. It's your turn.
Am I the last one to go?
You are. I think you are.
Wow. Um, I appreciate hearing all of the different perspectives from everybody else. And I I hope that the community appreciates how much this has weighed on every one of us. Like, I I don't want to speak for anybody else, but this is no easy task for any of us to be asked to make this decision if other organizations are passing on it and it's ending up on all eleven of us. And I've I'm taking that maybe a little bit too seriously. So I've been spending a lot of time thinking about the pros and cons of of each one of these models. And the truth is, I don't really like either of the choices. I don't like the choices that we've been presented with because they are not ideal. And and I know we're never gonna get to an ideal. And I think that's really what I've been struggling with, is that I want to make the educational experience for all of our students as good as it can be, you know, for for all students. So one thing that I guess in listening to the conversations about sped and about athletics, I do wonder, what are we, I worry about somebody who doesn't fall into one of those categories, kind of getting lost in a remote system. Unless we build in regular check ins in person for each student. I think that's really what concerns me most about this model. That being said, I'm not an educator. I don't, this is not my area of expertise. I I appreciate that many, many people have spent a lot of time thinking about this to to come to this recommendation. And in an ideal world, if we have to, if if we're going to be approving a remote model, I just and the details are still going to be worked out after this, which it sounds like they are. I would urge the steering committee and the people who are developing these plans to consider the average kid who's not going to be falling into a sped category, who's who 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 still needs that connection that Mike was talking about. And make sure there's a plan for them too. And I guess the only other comment I'd have is that, you know, one of the public comments said, the teachers are getting ten days of professional development at the beginning of the school year. I thought this was a really good comment. They're getting ten days of training to figure out how to do a remote learning environment. Can't we do something, can't we recognize that maybe our students need ten days or whatever the amount of time it is to to make those interpersonal connections at the beginning of the school year? You know, if we could try to figure out something like that when implementing a remote system, that that would make me feel a little bit better. I don't really have any questions, just comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I thought those were great comments. Rich, did you have your virtual hand up?
I did. I guess just one thing I wanted to say quickly is like, let's have, let's have some faith in the future, have a little optimism and that things are gonna start to turn around and and have some faith in the in the people that we chose, you know, the superintendent that we chose to be in the position, the people that she's, she's gonna choose people around her that are gonna make her successful and the kids in our community successful. So let's just, let's have some faith. There's a lot of anxiety here, but we can do it.
Thank you for the pep talk. I know everyone thought that Amy was last, but I have not weighed in myself. I I have a lot of questions, but I don't think there's an answer that anyone could provide that would make this decision any easier. It, like you said, Amy, it weighs heavy on all of us. I don't think I've had a good night's sleep since, well, since March. And and I do appreciate how just difficult the situation is. The only thing that I want to say is that a couple, like even a couple of weeks ago, I realized that I was sort of in this perspective and was making assumptions about beliefs that I held, that I didn't even realize I held them, that in person equals good, remote equals bad, for socialization, for academics, for connection, like everything across the board. And I was, was like, part of the reason I was really struggling with all of this is because I had this binary thing in my head. And I think it's natural, especially for people like me who didn't grow up with technology. But and then I started to get really frustrated that we might be in a situation where academics would be remote and, you know, extras would be in person. And I went through a period of frustration about that. And then, for some reason, something clicked and I realized that that's not the right way to think about this, that given the constraints that we have, like academics can be great remotely, connection could be good remotely, but academics could also be partly in person. If we go to a remote model, it almost feel like, it feels like it opens up more opportunities for us to go in and do a chemistry lab in a building, but have the rest of the the lesson remotely. And connection, I appreciate your comment, Mike, about the virtualization of connection because broadly speaking, I do think that's something that we need to worry about. But given, given where we are at this moment, I think that virtual connections could be really strong, but they can also be supplemented supplemented by in-person connections. And those don't necessarily have to be a classroom setting. And the idea of going to school remotely and then going to soccer practice after in person really upset me two weeks ago. It doesn't upset me anymore. It actually sounds like making the best of a bad situation. And so I just wanted to show an example of how like, this is a difficult situation and your thinking can change over time. That's all that that I wanted to say. Steve, what's up?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the board approve the plans for the high school to go complete remote, starting in September and and going until the administration decides that it is appropriate to change the way we do business.
All right, there is a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. For discussion, I just want to do a little bit of semantics. So we were hoping that Desi would have a template for us for language to how to approve plans like this. They do not. They're supposed to be into the state by today, but we don't.
What else is new?
Right. You know, we don't have technical language, so I think we're gonna do the best we can. I think Steve's motion from a semantics perspective is fine for the high school. I think that, and I think it's fine to do it as the high school. I think we probably have to do a separate one as K to eight. And then we would have to do an umbrella motion to sort of approve the plan and submit it to Desi. If, when, I don't know, Desi comes back and says, here's the specific language we want you to use very similarly to the way that the MSBA said, here's how we want you to vote this motion. It is quite possible we will have to hold a ten minute school committee meeting at some point to change the language of a specific motion. It is quite possible we will have to hold a ten-minute school committee meeting at some point um to change the language of a specific motion. Um, I just want to put that out there now so people don't think that we're going to change the intent of a motion. Um, but there might be some bureaucratic logistics that that need to be done um after the fact, so. Um, is there any other discussion? Yeah.
I call the vote.
Leah has her hand up.
Yeah, I called on Leah before I got to you, Steve, so.
Oh, allow discussion. So, um, my only thing is this, and I want to clarify because earlier I talked about a sunset clause and Steve has just put the kibosh on it. So the sunset clause is for this purpose. So let's say that from September sixteenth to October fifteenth or November first, we observed that there are few schools around the Commonwealth that are lot doing the live streaming that we were stumbling around earlier. And we want to say, maybe the live streaming can work and we can bring some. The only reason why I wanted a sunset clause is so that we could have a date at which we could simply extend and say, no change necessary, keep going. There's nothing more to see here, or you could perhaps bring to us some enhancement to the remote model that could address some of the concerns that we just don't have guidance on right now, that maybe we could, we could address.
Uh, Brooke, I don't know if you wanted to respond. Kathy also has her hand up.
Well, Kathy, did you want to respond to that?
It sort of piggybacks on what Leah is saying. So I'm not sure if in light of the the shortened school year and the short end, um, a- a- and the the later start date, if the quarters are going to be adjusted and the quarters are, and this is where my bad math comes in, how many weeks are in a quarter? But I'm wondering if that's a a logical point for evaluation or as Leah is saying, sort of, yeah, a reevaluation date as opposed to just really um ending at that point, because I I understand that, I realize at the school there'll be ongoing evaluation. Um, so uh, so that's just my question.
Mary?
Oh, I didn't see my act.
Sorry. Hey, go ahead.
Again, I would want to leave this up to administration to bring to us um, recommendations as to any changes with the data that we will, you know, we will be accumulating as we look at what's happening with with COVID and what other districts are doing and we're looking at levels, et cetera, success and and not success. See, I really think that we are verging, we are moving into administrative um province. And I think we have to get out and wait for our administration um, to bring us recommendations. And so the I I I approve how how Steve put it because I really do think we need to stick with what our province is, and it is not administration.
Um, all right, I think I might have a compromise that I think will suit both sides of this argument. Um, I would imagine that uh I would call it fall reopening, but I think that'll change over time, will be on every single school committee agenda moving forward. Um, and I think it is fair at every one of those meetings to ask the question, is it time to reevaluate? Is it time to switch? Um, the answer will be what it is. Uh, but I think that that is fair to discuss at any one, any and all of the school committee meetings coming up throughout the fall.
And I would say that Brooke is super responsive always to the community, to us. So I'm not worried about it. I just always think it's good policy to create targets. That's all, that's the only reason. But I I agree, Elaine, I I could live with what you just said.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All right, um, Alita, do you want to do the vote? Would you mind doing the vote, please? That's what I should have said.
All right, so the motion is move to approve the high school to go full remote learning on the first day of school in September and continue until administration decides appropriate. Ready? Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
You're on mute, Mike.
No.
Ms. Cohen?
You're also on, there you go.
What was it? No. Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Viterito?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. San Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Codyann?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The motion passes eight to two.
Thank you, Alita.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I know I know that this is exhausting. I know that I know that it's draining. Thank you for your time and attention and your thoughtfulness. Yes, Mike, what's up?
Um, I realize that um, the vote passed and I did not go for it. Now that we have a model in place, um, um, I I really feel that collectively we need to pull together and support this model that is absolutely moving forward. Um, I th- th- if this is, this, if this is what we're doing, we have to make the very best of it, and I'm I'm so confident that that we will. I mean, as I said earlier, this is, what was presented tonight was a best-case scenario for remote learning. I might not have been in favor of remote learning. But if this is what we're doing, I think we've been presented with a really strong avenue. So bravo.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, all right, so that is just the high school. The next the next part of our agenda would be basically to have the same discussion around our K to eight. Um, if you'd like to separate it out, middle and elementary, that's fine. I think a lot of the aspects overlap, so it kind of makes sense to do them together. Um, vote them separately. We can vote them together. Doesn't really matter.
I'm just wondering if we can um let our high school staff leave then now, that would be okay. So to our high school staff who came tonight, thank you so much for your efforts, for your work. I am so proud of our high school tonight to have Jen, Mike, our Janine, John, our new ones, Tanya, those people that we can count on, Matt, it's so good to have you back, Matt. And Steve, Katie, Jody, you are just all rock stars, and I just thank you so much for everything that you bring to us every day. We are so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
And thank you.
Once a Marine, always a Marine. You've never been an ex-Marine.
And uh.
Not an ex-Marine.
Thank you for having faith in us. We will do the best by our students every single day. So thank you.
We know you will. We know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And and thank you to all our K to eight administrators and folks for uh sticking around through that discussion. Um, and now, a couple hours later, um, being available to step up to the plate. Um, so with regards to the spreadsheet, oh, actually, sorry, I should back up. Um, is there a presentation or anything that, um, Brooke, you guys would like to?
No, because I think we've already, again, we've already done this. We've already had a couple of meetings on this. So I think from from our lens, unless you decide that you want us to do something different, at this point in time, we are still pushing ahead uh with the notion of uh pre, really pre-K to eight. Um, I don't know with Joan whether we should include the pre-K in that grouping or not, but yeah, pre-K to, because we've made some some difference with the differences to that program as well. Um, to bo- to all be in the hybrid model at this point in time. Uh, we're not coming tonight to suggest that there's any major changes that we're looking at or asking for. And I turn to um our principals to say, you know, we we certainly have had discussion. I would want, I would want our communities to know about that, even, you know, saying, should we look at full remote, even at the middle school level, but I think we can, and I'm going to ask the principals to come forward and and speak, because I know that we've had really rich discussion on this. We, one of our concerns, for example, is at our dare I say, K one-two level, you know, we're worried of, we're worried about our youngest kids right now. Um, I guess I think the the pre-K, I think we've, I think Joan's got a really nice handle on that. And I'm I'm very comfortable with the number of times that they're coming in. Of course, we'd like it to be more, but we're very comfortable with the program and how she's designed it. We are worried about the K one-two, because of course, that's where the reading starts, right? These are critical, critical years. As much when we were looking at the high school level, I was really concerned about those twelve, grade twelve, and I spent a lot of time thinking about our incoming seniors. At this level, we're really looking especially at that K one-two, because that's where the reading starts. And we wish that we could have them in more. We've had lots of discussion on that. But I don't think that we've landed anywhere to, as I, as we sit here tonight, to suggest a change. That doesn't mean that, you know, as we go on, that we won't look and come up with something. We're always trying to reflect and trying to better the model and see if there's some other way we can do it. But then we alw- it seems that when we do that, we also see some of the drawbacks too. And we always think about equity for all students. We think about all those kinds of things. So I think tonight, we we come forward and say, we're still sitting at the hybrid model as the the model of choice um at this point in time for our our pre-K to eight. But I would, I would like the principals to speak. You've been here so long, almost three hours tonight, just sitting and listening. Um, so we thank you so much. So Laura, Ross, Kyle, if if there's something that you you all want to put forward now, now would be the time to do that. Ross?
Um, I I would just say on behalf of, you know, myself, Sean O'Shea and Joel Bates, as a, you know, Joel's had as a pre-K to five. You know, I appreciate the the acknowledgement that we, you know, we've put a lot of work into the consideration of different plans. And we totally recognize that this is for now and it's not forever. Um, I think I can speak for myself as the principal of the center school that, you know, if the science and the guidelines uh support bringing kids in, we'd want to do that. Uh, I think significantly, Brooke, just what you talked about, you know, with literacy and certainly with math, mathematical foundations for students. But what's been talked about at at the high school level too, it's the, it's the connections, it's bringing kids into the school, it's getting them um, you know, oriented at that that K level, but also we have a lot of relationships to reestablish with kids within the building um, and with families too. So you know, I know that there's pieces of this that that get, you know, linked to what the decisions are tonight. Um, and we're, you know, prepared to finalize and work and continue to work on plans with scheduling, with, you know, our our our, you know, whatever we need to do um to to bring these things to fruition. I think all the task forces in their subgroups have worked incredibly hard at the K to five level, and I'm sure it's the same at, you know, six to eight as well. I've heard that, you know. Um, but we'll do whatever is allowable and feasible if we can bring kids in and you know, I I expect that we'll do nothing but give it our best effort uh for the betterment of our students.
I, and I think right now, one of the things that we're, that's holding us up, and one of the reasons we're looking for the decision hopefully tonight with this as well, is our our principals need to get those cohorts going. And we can't do that until the next step, and and that's your decision. And then as soon as we have that, then they'll sit back, they'll go back to the drawing board, work with Michelle Cody and our bus folks and and see how we can try to pull that together, because we envision that that's going to be a lot of um, pushing and tugging and pulling to try to create those cohorts. Ross, thanks. Laura, thoughts from you? And then Kyle?
Just a, just a few. I was trying to take down all my notes while everyone was talking and um, this is such a difficult time, and it has the potential to be so polarizing. And one of the strengths that we know um about Neshoba is that we are a strong community. And so we know that whatever decision is made, we will make the very best of it with all that are being. As administrators and teachers, our teachers are incredible. And we have full confidence in them to do right by every single student. And we recognize that um the students with the most complex needs to the students in need of enrichment, in between, there's a whole spectrum of student need. Students who are quiet, students who are outgoing, students who who have different interests, and we care about all of our students. And so we know that there's so much that we don't know about our current situation, but we do know that we're going to make it work. I know that I speak on behalf of all of the K to eight principals in the district, and we have collaborated all summer long. We haven't seen our kids in six months. And as a parent of two rising seniors in Lunenburg, I get the high school piece as well. Um, but we haven't seen our students in six months. And if there's a way for us to safely bring them into school, that's what we want to do. And we believe that we have the protocols and procedures in place in order to be able to do so. Um, and as a parent, I think about the choice. And with the offering the K eight hybrid model for the students, students, uh, parents know their child the best. And so with offering the hybrid model at K eight, for those parents who who know or believe, or for whatever reason, feel that the full remote learning academy model is what's best for their child, they have that choice um with our current plan. And um, in the end, we will respect any and all decisions that our parents make because we know that they know their child the best, and we're here to support whatever decision is made to the fullest. So that's, that's what all of my notes uh indicated, but um we're, we feel confident and we want to see the kids. We we want to build those connections and the relationships. We don't doubt that we could do that in the remote model. Um, but if we have the opportunity to be able to bring them in and and continue to grow and strengthen our community and foundation in person, then that's what we want to do.
Great. Thanks, Laura. I appreciate that. Kyle, quick thoughts from you?
That was great going after Laura. She's so articulate.
Nobody ever wants to go after Laura.
Should be a standing, should be a standing room that Laura goes last. Motion on the floor.
Turning my mic off.
Um, no, I, I mean, as far as hail's concerned, like, we're ready to go. We just need decisions to be made. We've got plans that are laid out for both models. They're, you know, well thought out. We've got schedules that are ready to go. Um, you know, we just, we just need decisions to be made so that we can put all the pieces in place. Um, I would say that there are going to be some differences between the schools and the towns, and we have worked tirelessly to make sure that those differences are very minimal. And there will be some. There's going to be some, because before we even entered into this situation, there were differences with staffing, there were differences with how we ran our programs. Uh, again, you know, a a major component of being in a regionalized school district is calibrating across the towns that you work in. So we've been working at that constantly to make sure that whatever those differences are, they're not, they're not major. Um, I do think to echo what Superintendent Clancy said, um, cohorting is key right now. We need decisions so that we can begin to 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 put kids into groups. And um, I hate to say it, but um, we're not going to be able to meet the requests of everyone. We're going to do the best we can to cohort kids in ways that acknowledge their academic needs, acknowledge their social needs, acknowledge where they live and what they might be doing for as far as childcare and supervision at home. But there's no perfect model. Um, so the sooner that we can start working on those things, the the sooner we can start to address the myriad of of questions and 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 asks that we get from our parents. Um, I I I think that one thing that we have right now, thank you to Joan DeAngelis, is that we've, we've got kids coming into the building for for testing. We've got testing sites set up. And I cannot tell you how exciting it is to be able to see students' faces in our building, you know, just just even briefly, you know, if it's seventeen kids that are going to go through the various academic and and specialized testing, it's great to see that because it's reassuring that we're starting to move in a direction where kids are back into our buildings. Um, the the final thing is, I I think there is a, there's an area of this where as much as like, you know, the high school, it it needs to focus on content. We're at a place K to eight where we got to think about just just the unique needs of our kids. And it might not be about content, it might be about the social, emotional issues that they're facing, you know, to Ross's point, we haven't seen those kids for six months. And um, they're going to be coming at us with a lot of different um specialized needs. So we're trying to do the best we can, when we look at our schedules, to balance the academic demands and the time that they have in front of a computer with the amount of um uh, social time that they have with their peers. So um, I appreciate the countless hours that you guys have put into steering this this district. I'm I'm happy to be working here, and um, as soon as decisions are made, we're going to forge ahead and and make sure that the best uh, um, learning experiences is possible for our students.
Great, thank you. And I'm just wondering, Joan, if there's anything here that that we're missing, is, do you want to speak to anything um with regards to the specialized component with the middle and elementary?
I just can't thank the elementary and middle school principals enough of the collaborative effort of going through and looking at IEPs and being really thoughtful about our complex learners and students who might need something different. So you know, we're a team and we're a tight team and we work together every day very closely. So I just appreciate everything they've done to work with me.
It is a great team. There's no choice about it. Okay. So I think, I think in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're at right now. I think, uh, the other, a, a, a couple of quick thoughts. We are not naive enough to think that we are going into this and will be into this particular model for the potential next five, six months. We know that we may have to pivot at any point in time and we're prepared to do that. So I want to put that out on the table as well. So we've had lots of discussion on that. Um, we understand that. The other thing we would stress again. These are not normal times and these children aren't coming back into like the, the, the normal classrooms, but. I think that we've done, I think, again, Rob and his team, I think have done an amazing job here to get us all ready. So I feel comfortable enough, or if, if I didn't, we would be pushing for a full remote here at this grade level, grade grouping as well. Questions?
Okay. Well, yeah, without objection, I think that we're going to skip the spreadsheet as well. Um, if you guys want to go look and see what your questions were, and if you want to ask one of those questions, I think that's perfectly fine. But again, without objection, I think that we can do what we started to do with the high school discussion, um, and kind of go. Um, round robin. Um, Leah, I'll, I'll start, I'll go ahead and start with you. I'll keep track of who's speaking this time.
I was actually just going to say, maybe you give us two minutes to go into the spreadsheet and pull things out that maybe we want to make sure get addressed. I don't know if anybody else feels like they need that. I don't. But does anybody want a minute?
We've had a little bit more discussion on this, so I think people might feel a little bit more comfortable than the high school because. The high school wa- was a very different, uh, situation completely because we. Were working on one pathway and then we kind of hit that wall and said, oh my gosh, we can't go any further with this right now. Uh, we're not there. So, I mean, you folks have already had, um, you know, time to ask questions and think things through or send questions to me through emails and stuff. So, uh, so there might be a different level of comfort with our middle and elementary than there was with the high school. And I absolutely understand and respect that.
Yeah. And I do think that a lot of the questions, particularly the questions that are coming in from the community are about details that. Have not been decided yet because there is not a confirmation of a model, um, particularly around the cohorts. Everyone wants to know if there will be a friend in the cohort and, um, people want to know about what happens if we drop into full remote with the remote academy. Definitely a lot of confusion about the remote learning academies. I think that's a, a big topic that we could cover. Um, in this discussion, just to try to get some clarity, um, around it, but. Um, I think I just want to make it clear for the community that a lot of this kind of, we have to take this step first. And then the principals and the administrative teams can do their job to figure out a lot of the details. Um, and then the families will have the information that they're actually asking for. Um. I would love it if we could do it the other way around. I, we, I just don't think we have the time, given the complexity and the pandemic and all. Um, to give you guys perfect information for every possible scenario, um, and then make the decisions at the end. Um, all right. Who would like to start? All right, I'll, I'll ask a question. Um, we talked a lot about, um, uh, student connection and sort of those supports at the high school discussion. Um, but for me, just being in the building is not an automatic checking the box that all of those same things will occur. So things like sports, things like, uh, you know, uh, extracurriculars or clubs, um, interests, um, support for counseling, things like that. So what is the plan for that, um, even with the kids in the building for a hybrid?
I'm going to say that that's going to differ a little bit from each building and, and I'm willing to bet that that, that may be one of those things that. Although we, we had the opportunity to think about that at the high school level, I don't know that our middle school level is quite there yet. I think because the, the, the two pathways are working quite differently, but i- if there's anything that, you know, Laura, that, that. Our Kyle for the middle school level that you'd want to add, feel free to add in there.
Kyle, would you like to speak first?
I think that was a shock count, but I'm not sure.
Fair enough. Fair enough, Laura. Um, I think it really depends what students are in front of us. So I think it like, once we start to, to realize like what, which kids are going to be, um, you know, choosing like the academy or choosing. Um, the hybrid instruction, I think that's going to start to determine like exactly how we, um, caseload our, our staff. There, there's some definitely some professional development that needs to happen with, um, some of our, um, providers to make sure that they're able to, to fluctuate. Between in-person, um, supports and some of those more remote supports. And, um, as far as those first ten days are concerned, like, you know, we're not just counting on those first ten days. There's a lot of SEL training that's happening right now. As a matter of fact, um, we have a second session tomorrow. We have an SEL team that's in place, um, starting, you know, it started last Tuesday. It's continuing tomorrow. It's going, I think there's two more sessions after that. Where we're actually working to train our staff so that they can manage some of the social, emotional things that we are, we know are certainly going to crop up. As far as like a very individualized and specific answer, it depends on like, we know what, what a kid is getting and their C grid delivery minutes. You know, if there's a kid that's getting some counseling sessions, um, that's going to look different in hybrid and remote. It's certainly going to look different if a kid is getting, um, like some sort of, uh, social supports. What I mean by that is like, if a kid is getting like a social group, that, that's a little bit more challenging to do in a remote situation. Um, you know, our ideal would be that some of those kids are, are in a, um, localized situation and we're able to do some face-to-face work with them. But, um, again, I think it goes back to, uh, what models are chosen, um, some professional development for our staff. And, um, um, I, you know, making sure that we're balancing those kids who are hybrid, those kids that are remote.
Um, Rich has his virtual hand up, so I'm going to go to him first and then to Amy.
Uh, mine might be a little in the weeds and forgive me if, uh, if I forget the actual details. It's nice to meet you, by the way, virtually. So, uh, uh, help me understand how the kids at the middle school will. Travel in cohorts. I can clearly understand it from an elementary standpoint. But are the kids going to, um, like my daughter Sydney is going to be going into sixth grade, so it's all new for me. So my question is, are they going to stay in their classrooms and then the teachers are going to rotate? Or am I not understanding how this is working?
Hello?
I think Joe, I, I. Joe, I think you're, yeah, there. Kyle, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Um, Mr. Echo, yes, that, that is, that is how we're, we're planning right now. Um, our instruction, if we're in a hybrid is that they are, they are co-horted into A and B. And then within that cohort, they are in, so A would be Monday, Tuesday. And then B would be Thursday, Friday. And then there's a, a cohort within each of those. Um, it depends on how large your school is. Some of those cohorts are four, some of those cohorts, uh, some of those groupings are five. So you might have four homerooms or five homerooms. And those kids stay in those small groupings throughout the day, not, not, we're trying to limit the number of times that they're traveling. Um, there are going to be some times where they will certainly travel. We're trying to limit that as much as possible. Um, and that really goes back to the contact tracing thing. You know, making sure that we're able to identify if there's a case, um, we know, uh, the students that were in, uh, what the CDC is now calling like close contact. So, um, that, that is a little bit more challenging when you have students who have specialized needs. Um, they kind of move in and out of those cohorts. But in, in large part, there's a cohort A, a cohort B, and then there are smaller, um, four to five groupings. Within those cohorts where those students stay together in classrooms and teachers move to meet students.
Great. Thanks, Kyle.
Yep. Okay, that's great. And so this one's a little bit in the weeds too. Um, asking for a friend, AKA constituent. So with the eighth grade, uh, will they still have Spanish and does the band count as a core class or as a special? And will that be broken up over the semesters like art?
Now, I, I, I'm going to say this to the middle school principals, if you're not prepared to, to answer that, it, it's okay because that, those are areas. Um, just so that you know that, you know, we've received some pretty specific guidance on and. Um, I'm not sure if the middle school principals are prepared to speak to that tonight. If you are, that's great, but if, if you don't have anything to defend it, that's understandable. Laura?
We recognize that it's a need and we are working on it. Together collaboratively, um, with our staff. To a great deal. Uh, we, we recognize that these are really important. Areas for our students and our families and we are going to. Maximize all that we can do in the reality in which we are. And so it's, um, we're working on it.
It's really hard.
It's really difficult. It's very, very difficult.
Okay, I heard, I heard, that was great. Thank you. I heard, uh, you don't, you don't know yet, which is completely fine. And thank you.
We're working on it. Kyle, did you want to add something?
There's only one thing I would add is that we've seen and we've reviewed Desi's guidance on how we should deliver these related arts classes. And we're working our best to surpass it and do better than what Desi's guidance is. And, and, um, it's challenging and it's hard work. But, um, we feel that it's really super important work for like the holistic component of who our kids are and all their myriad different like loves. And their relationships and connections with other teachers. We've seen the guidelines and we want to go better and beyond what it, what we're seeing.
Thanks very much. Didn't put, mean to put people on the spot because I know there's a lot of details that are just coming out of this, so appreciate it.
Um, all right, Amy had her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, my question is a lot broader than that. And I had a few questions in the spreadsheet and I'm going to try to lump together to address it, which is basically that. Um, I think. The initial. Read of the hybrid plan, um, was that. There's not going to be as much synchronous learning on the remote days for students than I think. The community had expected. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering if like, if there's ways that we can. Still, um, massage the hi- hybrid model to make improvements in that area, like are there?
So Amy, that really gets back to exactly what Elena was saying at the beginning. Until this model is chosen, we, you, you, you're kind of stymied until you know that you're going forward with this model. And that's when you make the different changes and, and make, make whatever other enhancements you're trying to make or whatever.
But I guess if our plan is already saying that we're going with a hybrid model. Um, or for, for elementary and middle, middle school, what? Why hasn't that already been, aren't we assuming that we're going with a hybrid model for elementary and middle school?
We, we, we have been working towards that plan because you recall that you, the vote that you gave was to be in support of us. Working towards that plan. So we have been, but you, you don't flush out every single detail in it until you know. Because quite frankly, tonight you could have turned and said, well, actually we've changed our mind. We want you to go full remote. Right? So there are some details there that we're not going to be able to work out, like, like the cohorts is a perfect example. We can't do that until.
Yeah, I'm not asking about cohorts. I guess.
No, I know that. I know.
On the live, I mean, on the, the remote days, the language in the draft plan says things like when possible, within the school schedule. Synchronous check-ins will be facilitated and, um, I'm wondering if we can. Offer more scheduled, planned, scheduled opportunities for synchronous check-ins on remote days in the hybrid model.
I'm, I'm not sure who would like to, to, uh.
Think we need to keep in mind that on, on the days that say cohort eight, cohort A are remote. Each, that those teachers that they have on Mondays and Tuesdays are now in school, in session, working with cohort B. For an entire day. So that's why, so that's why on those days of what would be considered remote. We've say, we're working to have, you know, synchronous check-ins that might be with an advisor, an advisory, a guidance counselor. But we certainly can't expect, you know, teachers to be doing, you know, double duty of double students on those days when they're in class teaching full day, all day long. Which is why the Wednesday remote day focuses on a real strong synchronous learning day for all students in the community. That balances synchronous and asynchronous and brings the entire community together.
Right. Thank you. I, I think that my questions in the spreadsheet were a little bit more nuanced and I glossed over it. So I'm wondering like if there's. Other staff that would be available. You know, other than the teachers who are teaching classes.
Yep. So that's, that's current, Amy, it's a great question. It's currently in progress and we're currently looking at all of our buildings. And what staff might be available to help support that kind of a model. As well as some of those coming in and working with the teaching and learning department to help kind of oversee and work with what that might look like.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But until, again, and like, like the superintendent said, until it's approved, we want to make sure that then we can move forward with putting those plans in motion.
Uh, Joe?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I want to apologize. I have the world's glitchiest Google Chromebook and I apologize. It unmuted on its own, so I apologize for that. Of course, right at the minute my wife was calling me. I have, I have two very quick questions. Um, and forgive me and if I, these questions have been answered in the past. I don't think I heard the answers, but I will ask them again. They're very quick. It will not take any time. The first question. Uh, pertains to, um, I believe it was brought up at the last meeting. And it has to do with parents who opt for one model, be it hybrid or at remote. And then decide they want to change their, their minds and go back to the other. The child is deciding remote but wants to go hybrid, child starts hybrid, opts to go remote. If I'm not mistaken, I heard that this was a, a, a process that hadn't really been fleshed out. Is, is that correct?
So, Joe, we've talked a little bit about that since the last meeting. Um, and it certainly makes a lot of sense, obviously, to, to, um, look at requests from parents and what's at the best interest of the student. But oftentimes in those circumstances, even when a student is coming back, say, you know, into school from another setting or such. We look at the, what are the natural breaks in, uh, quarters and or semesters? So we might look to say, hey, you know, at the first quarter break, that would make sense for a student to come into a new model. Given that there'd be a fresh, you know, kind of a fresh start into a new quarter or a new semester. So that, you know, there wouldn't be either an overlap or a gap in some of the learning that might take place from the remote to, uh, you know, the hybrid model.
Well, well, thank you, Todd, for answering that question because I believe it was at the last meeting you had said that was, I think your words were, we would look to work with the parent. And, um, from my, from my perspective, that sounded a bit ambiguous, but I understand where you're coming from because I said, my mind is like, well, we're either going to have a liberal. Process by which parents can move back and forth, or we're going to have a static one that's going to say, look, you're not going to be able to do it at your will. It's going to have to be pursuant to a process. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Todd.
Yeah. And that, that certain, that discussion certainly came from our last meeting in that that was a question that came up. And we certainly want to remedy that to that, something that's consistent across the district.
Yeah, I would say too, that we have had some mixed messages on that from the D E S E. In fact, we had that discussion earlier today. On this very topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, my second question is from Ms. De Angelis. And again, it's a very quick one. When the parent, when the sped parents, when will they be informed or when do you think the parents will be informed as to what tier their child falls in as far as, uh, return to school this year?
So I, I guess I'm waiting for the survey to see who picks remote and who picks hybrid. Because I think that that's going to be important element for scheduling for services if they're selecting remote. Or if they're selecting a hybrid model, we're going to make a recommendation about, um, who needs what level of. Um, service and how many days, but I, I also need to know what parents are selecting.
Thank you.
Good. Great. Um, Amy, I'll come back to you. I want to go around and see if everybody has questions first.
All right. Mine is a follow-up question for that, but I can.
Okay, go ahead.
My dog keeps barking as soon as I start talking. Um, no, it just, I, I think that that is. I know this is a situation of chicken and the egg, but it's a, it's difficult for parents to choose a model. Uh, in a survey before knowing how the services are going to be delivered. This is feedback I've heard from more than one person, so. Um, I just. Um, I need to bring up that point because. The parents are asking when they're going to find out how the services are delivered. The school is saying, well, we need to know what model you're choosing before we can figure that out. And, and it's, it's like, I, I don't know how to resolve that.
So I guess what I would say to you, Amy, is we want to do as much in-person special education services as we possibly can. Because we think that's the most effective modality for the specialized instruction that we provide. So our recommendation for out of the gate will be in, in person as much as possible. If that helps.
We, we don't like the chicken and egg piece here either, Amy. Uh, uh, again, is the ambiguity. It, it, it's not a comfortable place for us to be in either. So we, we get why it's frustrating.
All right. I'll take volunteers here because I'm keeping track. All right. I'll take volunteers here because I'm keeping track. Brett, why don't you go?
Uh, with the, uh, smaller cohorts, will there be inclusion for the sped students?
So I, I'm not sure that I, I, I think, are you asking, will there be inclusion for the sped students? Is that what you're asking, Brett?
Yes.
Yes, the students who are in inclusion are going to be built into those classes and will be either pushing sped teachers in like we would. In a regular schedule, or we will be pulling kids out based on their C grid minutes.
All right. All right. Anything else you wanted to say or ask, Brett?
Uh, no, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I will, I will take more volunteers or else I will start calling you by name. All right, Leah.
Okay. So I really appreciate what Kyle said about trying your very best to create friendships. Um, I think that's really important for middle schoolers and Kyle, I know you're very in tune with what middle schoolers need. And I'm sure other principals are as well. Um, so that I would like to emphasize. I'd also, um, like to ask a clarifying question and then a probing question. So my clarifying one is. Have you guys, um, was there any, or is there any more value in an A B A B schedule as opposed to an A A B B schedule? Do you know what I mean by that?
Yeah, I, yes, I think we, I think you do. I think that one of the reasons we looked at, well, I think there were multiple reasons why we looked at the, the, um. Configuration that we, we did. Part of it, I think, was level of consistency. I think we felt it was really consistent. Um, Tom, I'm just trying to think of the, it was quite a while ago to be honest. I'm trying to go back in my mind and think of other reasons.
Can you, can you say the other model that you just iterated?
Some districts are doing A B A, and then Thursday is A B, Thursday and Friday are A B. And we're doing A A and then B B. And so it per, it ultimately creates a five-day gap. Um, for the kids.
Yep. I'm not sure that the A B A B necessarily was one that was of, of, um, prime consideration. We certainly had, we, we started with the five day on, five day off. And then we took a look at the A A, B B, and we certainly saw that as more advantageous. Because that would have been a 10-day gap for kids out of the building. And then we certainly liked the idea of the continuity from day one to day two, so that, that there wasn't a break. So at least students had, you know, you know, Monday and Tuesday, so teachers could, could continue on with continuity. And that every student in the district would certainly be getting into the building once a week, more so twice a week. Um, and I think that's where we landed. And with that Wednesday, that continuous, consistent community effort on the Wednesdays was something that we, we landed on.
So that's, and that's a hundred percent true. And I, the only thing that I would add would be that, that we were looking at the major clean between two groups. We were looking at trying to keep like groups of students together. And that's why the A A. And then deep clean, B B, deep clean, A A. So that real, if, as I'm, you know, remembering this. I think that that was one of the pivotal points to all of this was to make sure that, because I remember when we were first getting the, the guidance out. It was, again, about trying to keep the grade or, or the, the same configuration of students, um, as closely contained as you could. And like, and so I, if memory serves me right, I think, or, uh, Todd, I think it was even recommended at some point in time that we follow the A A B B primarily as a result of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, all right. So my second question has two parts. Um, so in, in ultimately, uh, this is no joke. Um, it ultimately boils down to the question of why would the high school go remote? And the middle school and elementary school kids wouldn't. And so I guess. Um, you know, part of what we were talking about at the high school is, you know, putting kids and desks six feet apart, look one way, move one way. All super regimented with littler kids, there are other considerations like snack time and getting them on and off the bus. And I mean, just the myriad of ways that they could make their environment kind of cross-contaminated because they're little. And so I'm wondering, A, why is it okay to ask the littlest people? To kind of engage in that really sterile environment that will have all the drawbacks that the high school will have. And the second piece is if we're going hybrid for K to eight, have you yet reconciled? The whole quarantining and sub-debacle that might riddle us like it is doing across the southern states that have opened?
So I think to, in, in response to the second part of your answer, I would say, no, I don't think we've reconciled that. I, I, unless Lisa can throw something in there. But I think at this point in time, I, I don't think there's any reconciliation that I can think of. For the other piece, and I, I'd asked the, the principal certainly to, to, um, weigh in. But I think that's where we had come, again, we see these youngest learners that we have, and we just feel that they need that connection with their, their teachers. Our older kids, we felt were just better prepared. And we were, really were coming from the notion that. The high school is really getting those kids ready for after, after their public life, you know, the, the public education journey. Whereas our youngest ones, we felt still needed that embrace, like a virtual embrace, I guess, in some ways, because we can't hug them or anything. But still needed to feel that sense of community. Oh, this is my school. This is my building. This is my, where the high school kids know theirs. Do you know what I mean? Uh, uh, even the grade nines, everybody knows our, our flagship school, you know? Whereas they don't necessarily know, like Hale or Center. Well, Hale probably do, but Center School, for example. So I think we just felt it was really good because we don't know how long we'll be able to maintain the hybrid. Before a metric happens where we have to go full remote. And so we just thought it was almost like trying to get the children in so that they could at least make a connection with their teacher before they ended up in potentially. And again, I don't have the crystal ball, so I don't know when that's going to be, but at least there's a connection there. And we felt that that was really critical. Wasn't the only reason, uh, Leah, but that was certainly one of many reasons. Ross, did you want to jump in on that?
I, I would just add on the academic side too, Leah, is the cohorting piece of this where, you know, our classes are going to stay together. Basically, you know, with the exception of mass breaks or whatever, other things we build into the, the schedule, you know, for leaving the, the classroom. The, you know, the other piece of this is we don't have kids who are going to need to take different classes or be within different cohorts during the day. Um, so I think that's one factor on the academic side that they were saying that they faced with the challenging, um, situation at the high school. So the, the cleaning and the safety pieces are all the same. I understand what you're saying. Um, but I think, you, you know, as far as the academic piece, I think that's one thing that at least at the K to five level works in our favor. Um, when it comes to social distancing and not mixing cohorts is that we are sort of self-contained within our classrooms. From start to finish every day, you know, whether they're outside or inside, they're still together and they're not mixing with other groups.
Yeah. I mean, I just as a follow-up, I think that, um, I can totally sympathize with the staff members of K to eight. Because I think that being asked to go into a hybrid scenario is very scary. And I know this personally because my school just voted to go hybrid and I'm at a high school. So I get it. It's, it's a really hard thing. So I hope that we are providing ample choice for our staff. As much as we are for our parents. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have another volunteer? Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I would like it noted for the record that at this point I have no comment. And no questions.
Talk about unprecedented. Uh, Mike.
Uh, just a quick question. Um, last week, I believe, um, I was really happy to hear that we have. Um, high need students that are going to be prioritized for full-time in-person instruction. Um, I wonder if we are going to engage with our counselors and our social workers. To see if some of our more at-risk students are also qualified and prioritized for full-time in-person learning?
I actually can take that, Mike. I worked with the guidance and school adjustment counselors across the district. I could give you the list of names of regular ed or special ed students that we feel that need more, um, in-person connection to the district, including the high school.
But that's good to hear.
I'm sorry?
That's confidential, but, but I'm.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you the list. I'm gonna tell you though. I, I have a list of students that we had, we, we met very frequently. We had a plan. Um, I met with the group K to eight. I met with the high school group. So we're really clear about kids that we know we need to connect with in person.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, all right. How about Mary? Did you have anything that you wanted to ask or say?
No, I'm all set, ready to vote when there's a motion.
Oh, boy. Okay. Uh, Steve, did you, uh? All right. Nothing from Steve. That means that I have at least, um, polled everybody. Um, I did want to ask if you guys could talk a little bit more about the Remote Learning Academy, um, and some of the mechanics behind it. Cause I think that's something that's very confusing for people still, um, in terms of where the teachers will come from. Cause it was very different at the high school. Um, and then what happens for the kids who are in this hybrid program? If they dropped to full remote for whatever reason, the Remote Learning Academy is, how, how that all fits in together? Cause it sounds to me like they stay separate and you're now running two fully remote programs. Um, but yeah, could, so could somebody explain that a little further?
Okay. I'm not sure who the best one is to, to take this. Um, Kyle's got his hand up. Okay. Are you going first or is Laura going first?
I think there's some differences between the levels. First of all, I think there's, um, there's an elementary model, there's a middle school model. And they're, so they're a little bit different. And what we've arrived at, at the middle school model is that there are these content experts. Who, um, they really, um, they're going to be teaching at the academy. Social studies teacher will teach six through eight at the academy. This is all based on numbers, of course. Um, but for the middle school model, there are, we're looking at having, um, trying to have, you know, four content experts, somebody there to provide some, um. Technological support, like an instructional technology support person. Um, and ideally there would be a special education person there who's to oversee the kids who are in the, uh, in the academy. I think it's a little bit different at the elementary school, um, level. I, from what I understand, it's a little bit more building-based, but I'll leave that to Ross to comment on.
So as far as the sort of the overall plan for remote learning, I know that Todd's been a little bit more deeply involved in that than I have. But I can say at least for, for our end is that we recognize that we want to make sure that we give families and give those students schedules. For what their days are going to look like. So, you know, I don't know the level of interest in Remote Learning Academy for, for our center school students. Um, but we definitely know that we want the schedule to more or less mirror what they might get during the school day for instruction. And then talk about what are some best practices, you know, as the school year begins with how to. You know, if that teacher has X amount of students, how do they deliver, you know, the small, you know, the small mini lesson to start the, the content? How do they break kids up into small groups to deliver follow-up instruction and give that feedback? Um, but I think that we, we recognize that providing schedules for families is critically important. Um, and then also on some level, how do we connect those kids together? And then how do we also connect those kids still to the center school? Because I don't want kids to feel like they, they no longer have the center school. I mean, they're, they're still part of the center school, just through the Remote Learning Academy model.
I can just say something too. That, that's something that we've really focused on with all schools, whether it's a high school, the middle school or the elementary. It's, it was really important. A lot of our discussion centered around the fact that we wanted to make sure that our children felt that they belonged to their school. Whatever their school was, even if they were part of the remote, uh, academy.
And just a lot of that too, will hinder on that survey that goes out this week. You know, once the this comprehensive plan is approved by the school committee, we can send that out, get that out to families. And then with the survey, they're going to make a determination on what model that they prefer. So once we have those numbers, we're then able to work with, you know, what, what that small, small cohort might look like in individual schools. And have a team of teachers working with that group of students. So.
Okay, thank you. Amy, did you have a question with that?
Yeah. So I guess I'm wondering, are the Remote Learning Academy staff, are they, they're Nishoba employees?
They are.
Okay. And we have enough staff to cover two cohorts in hybrid and run a remote learning academy with, within the existing level of staff? Are we hiring additional staff for the remote learning? Like I, I just, that's been a question people have asked me and I've.
At this point in time, we're not looking at hiring any additional staff.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then, and another question, just trying to wrap my head around this. So if we are in a hybrid model, we switch to full remote. Um, because of some kind of public health guidance that says that's what we need to do. Um. The, is, is that full remote model merging with the Remote Learning Academy at that point? Or are the people who elect a remote learning academy staying in that for the rest of the year? Like, is that just going to be a separate thing no matter what?
Amy, that's a great question. And again, I think that's going to determine on the numbers that we get on students that determine. You know, our families that determine what they're going to opt for. But ultimately I think that, you know, similarly, like why we, we, we move forward with the remote model at the high school. Was to get everybody in that same schedule, working with their teachers. But again, if we were, you know, we had kids in a remote, remote learning academy. Um, for two months, let's say, and we're in the middle of a quarter. We would probably make sure that those kids finish out a quarter with those particular teachers and that there was a natural break to then get everybody into. You know, that, that, that seamless transition. So that's still a work in progress, but it's going to depend on the number of students in each, in each building that opt for that. And then, you know, again, that's the trajectory of if we go remote, where do we then shift to? But that's why we're creating several plans, whether it's all-in, hybrid or full remote. So that we can make that pivot, um, pretty seamlessly, so that all students are getting the same experience.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Last question is, I, I don't know if it's, if this is intentional, but when I read the plan, it says that the Remote Learning Academy. Is available for students who are not yet able to return to in-person learning. So does that mean that there's like, the Remote Learning Academy is intended for? When I first read that, I guess I thought I meant it was for a student who met it, who, for medical reasons or some other. Whatever reason couldn't, that was not yet able to return to in-person reading. But then as I read the plan further, it was apparent that I think this is a choice that people can make.
It is. It's for any student or family that, that does not feel that there's, that their student can return to school. You know, in a, in a one-to-one in-school model. And so that they can opt for the Remote Learning Academy, no matter what the reason is. So it doesn't have to be a medical reason. It can be that that's just what they opt in for because they're not ready or feel ready. To return to an in-person school model.
Okay, that language wasn't clear to me. I don't know if it was, um, just me, but it might be something you might want.
It's good feedback and we can certainly look at it, which is why, you know, this is a draft so that we can take that feedback and move forward with making it inherently clear for everyone.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to ask, um, or comment on?
I had a question.
Sure, Rich.
Um, it was, the document was kind of light on what happens if there's an outbreak. And I certainly don't think any of you are public health experts. And so, um, you know, you're educators, you know, you guys do a great job in your, in that area. Although it seems like a lot of people expect the schools to do a lot of different things, other than just simply educate kids. Uh, but with respect to this, I guess if somebody gets sick, they're going to be put in some sort of medical room, right? Um, and then public health will take over. Um, and so my question is, are, in terms of the contract tra- contact tracing and everything, are, are you tracking that on a daily basis? Is there some sort of software that you're using? Um.
That's going to be Elisa's question.
Hi.
First time we've heard Lisa all night. Almost five hours.
She is a public health expert, just to say she is.
Really good question. Um, and actually we just had this conversation with nurses today and I apologize. Um, allergy season for me, not COVID.
Allergy season for me, not COVID. Um, so contact tracing is definitely done at the local board of health. We are as, as, um, school nurses will help with that surveillance. It was not completely contract tracing, as you would think of those terminologies, but we will be an instrumental part in that. So what typically happens is if somebody is tested positive, um, whether it be a staff member or a student, in, in our community, when I say our community, I mean our school community, um, it'll be, sometimes nurses will find out, school nurses may find out prior to local board of health. They, it goes into a database called Maven. Um, that's what their database is that's based on, and then they're notified via Maven that it's a positive in the, in the district or town. For instance, if it was in Bolton, it was an example for in Sawyer, we had a staffer student member that became positive. We sometimes may get the results faster than local board of health. That case, we would contact the local board of health and say we got a positive, and then they will, they would look for it in their Maven system, or vice versa. They would get it prior to us and then contact us. They still do all the contract tracing. This is why it's really important in the school systems for us to have assigned seating, know our cohorts, because they're going to be asking for a multiple of questions that's going to go along with that. So we can help with the contact tracing and surveillance, but then they will take over. We, we, we have partnerships and we work collaboratively together. Um, and, and we will supply that information to them as best that we can, um, based on, um, those assigned seedings, which is why it's really important in the kids' way, which makes sense in the high school as well, so those safety things. Keeping the cohorts together. When I say cohort, I don't mean cohort A and B. We mean like classrooms together, those mini cohorts, um, and what type of lunches they have. Does that answer your question, or do you have more to add to that?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I just was curious, um, like, for instance, I'm on the soccer board for the nonprofit we have in town, and they're just like, if somebody tests positive, they said they'll call us, you know, and it's like, no, I just want to know what policies there were for you guys to have in place to, um,
Yes, and if we suspect a student or staff member in the building, we have isolation rooms or medical waiting areas, depending on how you want to verbalize it. Um, we've, um, along with Rob Friesworth and facilities, we have made sure that we have one in each building, so we can separate with those, um, and determine if they need testing. We work very closely with our local board of health.
Yeah, that was another question to have, and I don't know if you, if you're comfortable commenting on it, but I was curious if, uh, you know, I believe there's a regional health system that, um, that still is part of, and I, and I'm, I'm pretty sure Bolton and Lancaster are part of the same collaborative. Is that right?
Correct. Um, and actually, um, our, Mike, our connection is with Tamara and Jim. Jim is the director and Tamara is the public health nurse. And, um, we do meet, um, every other week right now. Um, I'm, would make the assumption that once we come back to school, we will probably meet more on a weekly basis, um, to collaborate and work on issues that may be happening within the schools. Um, Billy, um, great go-to. They answer all of our questions for us when we have them regarding what's best practices within our schools. So I do connect with them on a regular basis, as well as when the principals have questions, I connect. I am the contact person with them. They kind of like to have it just one person, so we're not having, you know, if the staff members calling and asking the same question, it goes through one channel.
Okay. Um, okay. And, and I guess, I, I don't know if this is something you can comment on, are we confident that the regional service has stepped up appropriately to meet the needs of the school?
They are, because Massachusetts is really, Governor Baker did a really good job with the collaborative tracing. They have outside resources that help with that collaborative tracing. Um, and it's been really instrumental within our own region, because they have a large region than the Shoba Boards, um, Associated Boards of Health. I want to say they have thirteen towns. Um, so they did get, um, help from the state where everyone else has as well. And they've also had some school nurses that have helped out, and I'm also, um, Maven, um, super user. So if I need to jump on, I can help them as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to ask? I'm looking around at faces, and I think I'm seeing a lot of people losing steam. Um, I, I know that it's late. Um, I also know that this is really important, so I want to make sure that we are able to talk about it, but also in a productive manner. So, um, is there anything else that anybody wanted to share or ask right now? All right. In that case, then I would entertain a similar motion to what happened, uh, what we did with the high school. Um, in this case, it would be a motion to approve a hybrid model, um, to start the 2020, 2021 school year for our K to eight, uh, pre-K to eight grades.
So moved.
Oh, I need a second before I can make discussion. I have a second. Amy?
Um, preschool. I haven't, that's not in the plan that I read, that I could see. And I know this is a question on people's minds. What is the plan for preschool? Are we offering preschool?
Joan can speak to that. I, I think I spoke to that several times tonight, that I felt really comfortable with the plan that she's putting in place, and it, it's somewhat hybrid, a little bit shorter than, uh, we've had before. But Joan, maybe you can expand a little bit on it. And I believe you have a letter going out to parents shortly.
We do. We have two letters that were written this weekend. So, um, we have, uh, our preschool program is a special ed program. We have, um, role models that come into our preschool, so we really had to really examine how many students can we have safely and appropriately in our preschool setting with our special ed students. So we've decided for the role models, we are going to hybrid the model and split the groups in half, because typically we can have seven special ed students and eight role models. But I worry about fifteen three and four-year-olds and the ability for us to socially distance. So I do not think that's appropriate. So what we're going to do is we're going to split that eight role model for those inclusive preschools to four and have four in one week and four in the following week. We've also had to change the day schedule a little bit, because Wednesday is our deep cleaning day. So typically, we have preschool on Tuesday, Wednesday, um, and Thursday. So, um, our inclusive preschools are going to be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Um, so I met with the principals this morning. I have a letter ready to go out to our role model parents, and I have a letter to go out to our preschool special education parents that, um, I've designed the schedule. And I'm waiting, I, I, I want to get those letters out so parents know what the plan is. I have to wait on the principals to really work on their, um, entrance criteria and dismissal, so we can identify the times. We may have to bump the times up by fifteen minutes or so, because I think that with the staggered busing coming into the building, we might be a little bit more delayed for preschool.
Thanks, Joan.
Leah?
So is, do we have to vote on that separately then?
No, I don't think so. I think we can include, you know.
Did this motion include pre-K? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, and it's still a hybrid. The details are different, but the details are different between elementary and middle as well, so. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Um, Alita, would you please call the roll?
Who seconded that?
I did, Lita.
Was it Joe?
Yeah.
All right. So the motion on the floor is move to approve grades pre-K to eight, start the 2021 school year with a hybrid model. Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
I, I don't know how to do this, but.
Yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Verrito?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Ms. San Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Codyann?
Yes.
Mr. Joe, Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote of ten to zero to zero.
Thank you, Alita. Um, Amy, did you have a question about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just was a little confused why the, um, are we making a separate motion on a remote learning academy? And, and an option to choose a remote model? Isn't?
No, I mean, the Remote Learning Academy and the choice is all sort of baked into, like, we're, we're, umbrella is a hybrid, and underneath that you have, you know, your hybrid kids, your remote academy kids. That's all sort of part of the details of it.
Thank you.
Um, Brooke, do we, do you want us to do an umbrella motion, um, something about approving the comprehensive plan and submitting it to DUC?
I think that, yeah, I think that you and I talked about that. It might make sense to do that, to say that this is all encompassing for Neshoba. Uh, i- is as follows, the, you know, um, uh, pre-K to eight will be, um, hybrid, grades nine to, or nine to twelve will be full remote. So just, I think just something simple.
Um, okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Neshoba Regional School District's, comprehensive plan regarding the 2020, 2021 school year, which would begin pre-K to eight in a hybrid model and nine to twelve in a full remote model.
So removed.
Who first and second? Who first, who second?
I'm going to give that to Mary.
Mary for first?
Yeah.
Who's second?
Brett.
Anybody?
I second.
Guys, ready? A motion on the floor is to approve the NRSC com- comprehensive plan for the twenty, start of the 2021 school year with pre-K to eight in a hybrid model, and grades K to twelve in a remote learning model. Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Verrito?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Ms. San Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Codyann?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero to zero.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Alita, and thank you guys for putting up with, uh, those semantics. And I probably should say that there's an acknowledgement that all of this could change with, um, negotiations or with an executive order. Like, there are a number of caveats that would supersede any of, um, our motions that were made here tonight. Um, there is one other item on the agenda, um, that I wanted to talk to, but I think that it would be fairly brief. Um, and that is regarding a policy on masks, um, for the district. So MASC put out a standard template policy, um, that you should have all seen, um, by now. The administration made a recommendation to amend that policy, which we are absolutely free to do. The MASC one is just sort of the template based on the state guidelines. Um, administration made a recommendation to amend the policy to be for all students. And actually, I wasn't clear if that was pre-K or K or just all. And so, um, we can discuss that tonight. We can approve that tonight. We can toss it back down to the subcommittee, um, to do any other work on amendments. Um, we had sort of discussed this in theory a couple of meetings ago, um, but now that we have an actual policy, um, we can take concrete action on it if we wish. Um, so those are pretty much your choices for this evening. Um, we can obviously deliberate, but then approve, send to subcommittee, amend, et cetera. Kathy?
Yeah, just a point of information. Uh, Mike McCarron, our attorney, has looked through it, and he sees no reason for us to be concerned and would, um, obviously, we can make it all-inclusive. Um, but, uh, we have, uh, his go-ahead, um, to pass it as is or as amended.
All right. Thank you. That is actually good information. Um, Amy, question?
Yeah, so the policy as it reads now states that grades one and below are exempted from the policy, correct?
Correct, because that is the DUC guideline. So they're working with the state minimum.
But hasn't the district recommended K three twelve? Like, don't we need to make an amendment to this policy?
Yeah, and we can either make that amendment now, or we can send it to subcommittee to make that amendment. Uh, Steve?
Is there, is there any sanction against a child whose parents refuse to have them wear a face mask?
None that I'm aware of right now.
And there should be.
Uh, the policy, as you'll see, does say it requires a doctor's note. Um.
I've been, uh, this is Rich. Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Um, I talked to one of the raps from Minuteman, um, Vocational High School today. They've amended or are amending a similar policy. Um, and I believe the language is to the tune of, if you have a doctor's note or something, you just don't come to school. If you'd like, in other words, if there's a valid reason for you not to wear a mask in school, you must choose a remote learning environment.
Okay. Yeah, that would be another level up.
So, I mean, maybe with this level of ambiguity and given the hour, perhaps it makes sense to send this to policy groups, and we have, since we have a couple of weeks, and this is a simple thing. I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's definitely an option. Leah?
I was going to say that we have a policy subcommittee scheduled for Wednesday morning. And is this something that we could vote on at the workshop on the 25th? Would that timing even work?
Um, I think so. I think that, uh, if, if tonight, if I could poll everyone and see sort of in theory, do you support this? I think that's enough direction for our administrators and our principals to move forward with it. I know there, there's definitely families that are saying, well, I need, you know, masks are a big consideration for my choices. Um, and so I don't want to get hung up on the, the bureaucratic process of it, to, to not be able to let them know that, like, yeah, yes, this is the intent. We got to deal with some semantic stuff, um, and, but we'll get there, versus saying like, I don't know, we haven't voted on anything. Like, do you see the, the, I'm, I'm trying to navigate.
Totally.
Yeah.
So how can we do this?
Uh, Kathy, maybe you can answer that question.
Well, uh, just a, a suggestion, uh, since there's a policy subcommittee scheduled anyway, and I think that, um, I saw an email just before the meeting where people were asking if high school kids could wear gaiters, you know, those things that go around. Some people call them buffs. They come up and they cover right from here. Um, I think before, even if we put an elastic pause, it gives us some discretion. I, I think, and we can put it on the agenda for the workshop on the 25th, but I'm, I'm wondering if the, um, policy subcommittee could take a look at it in light of what we're hearing, and, um, if there are any further legal questions, we can send them out to Mike McCarron, because he approved it based on what was forthcoming from MASC, not with any changes. But I think some of the issues that are being raised, um, certainly what, um, Rich had shared, and also this idea of, um, things other than masks that cover your face being suitable. Um, I, I think we can take a little time on it. Um, I would rather, I would rather do that and then just to accept it as, as, as it is. Um, there are a couple of things that I, I, I think we ought to pursue.
Elaine? So I, I would absolutely agree with Kathy. I don't think you need to rush this right now, and I would, uh, if it was me, I would send it back to a policy subcommittee right now. Take your time, see what other school districts are doing. The, the message that parents should get, though, from tonight, and the message our administration team is, is getting is that you have every intention of pushing forward with some type of mask policy. And I think that's all really we're looking for right for tonight. So I would not be in a rush right now. I think we can let parents know that, you know, masks, we expect that masks will be mandatory in the district. More to follow. I think fine with doing something like that.
Okay. Mary?
And I, I agree with that, Brooke. Um, but while Joan is, is, is with us, um, I'd just like to ask.
Um, but while Joan is, is, is with us, um, I'd just like to ask her opinion on preschool. Um, as a former kindergarten principal, all kindergarten classes, I can tell you that kindergarten for sure, um, should wear masks and that they can be taught, this will be part of the routine, which I would think could also happen to preschool, but I'm not a preschool specialist and, and our preschool is a special education class. But, but you have the models there and the models, you know, could show, um, our, our preschool, our other preschool students with special needs. So while you're here, um, just one, one second, Joan, I do think it should go to the subcommittee, um, to explore and talk about gaiters and talk about, um, the decision, because if, if it is going to be in person, we would want, um, 99.9% of students to be wearing masks. So Joan, what, what about preschool?
So, as you probably know, we have preschool coming in for extended school year and kids are practicing wearing masks. We've spent a lot of time outside, but, you know, it's, it's challenging. And so the teachers and the power professionals have been working with the students to raise their tolerance to wear masks. But as you know, there are some special needs children with sensory issues that, you know, we're going to have to take into consideration in terms of what else can we use? So some kids have been using face shields in ESY and that's gone better. Um, but there are some kids that aren't capable of wearing, um, a face covering.
Not to belabor this conversation, but maybe, um, we could encourage some school spirit by getting masks that like have center school on it or something. For instance, my daughter's dance team has a mask that, you know, that they bought. It has the logo on it. Not trying to add costs here or logistical things, but that may encourage it as well.
We actually did that for the graduates as well, the, the Neshoba graduates this year. We made sure that they all had Neshoba masks 2020.
The subcommittee can look into it and, and all of the above too.
Okay, great.
Our eighth, our eighth graders had masks at their promotional ceremony that were provided by the school and it was their gift and they loved them, so.
Yeah, ours was, ours was a gift as well, so, yeah.
Um, do you?
I move. I move.
Vote.
I was gonna say, I moved that, do we, we have a motion on the table already?
No.
You don't, you don't need the motion if you're just sending it back to subcommittee. It's okay, she can, uh, uh, the subcommittee can just pick it up on Wednesday.
All right, yes, without objection, we're going to send that, um, down to subcommittee with the intent that all students will wear masks.
With extreme prejudice.
Just no. Um, all right, so then, thank you for that. So then we just have a consent agenda. Leah, are you ready?
This is my moment. Uh, I move to approve the consent agenda of August 10th, 2020, containing the meeting minutes of August 6th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
All right, um, I'll go down the list quickly, Leah, if this is okay with you. Um, my, my list is in a different order. Uh, Joe?
Uh, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Elaine, yes. All right, then, is there any final discussion or items for next agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Uh, this is, this is actually for this, uh, meeting and I, I know it's late and this is going to take no more than 30 seconds. But, uh, through you, Madam Chairman, I wanted to let my colleague, Mr. Horish, know that I heard what he said after the vote regarding the, uh, uh, plan for the high school to go remote. And I didn't act at the time, so I have to act now, else I'm forever compelled to hold my peace. Would Mr. Horish and Ms. Cohen desire a motion for unanimous consent on that particular motion? And if so, I'd be happy to make it on their behalf.
Um, I'm going to retain my vote. Thank you.
Elaine, can I just say something quickly here too? I just want to thank everyone on this call tonight. I mean, this has been a long, long night and it's been a lot of long meetings leading up to this and so much work and our administrative team is just, just the best. And I am so grateful every day that I get to work with all of you and I thank you so much. And to our school committee that just, I mean, you get paid the big bucks, right, to do this? My goodness, you know, with all, all that you get, it, you know, it's just, it's such, this has been so hard. And I just cannot thank, thank all of you enough for your faith, for your support, for your attention to detail, for your questions, for your poking holes in our thinking. Um, and, and I just want to thank everyone. And Todd, thanks for being such a great, great partner. I'm just so blessed. So thank you to everyone.
Amy, did you have a question?
I, I'd just like an opportunity to respond to, um, the question that was posed to me.
Oh, Joe's, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I, I also was trying to, um, I guess the answer to your question is no, but I also want to voice my support now that the committee has approved a remote model. I will 100% um, be an advocate for it and work with the administration in whatever capacity the school committee is supposed to do, um, within our purview to make that as successful as possible. So, um, I tried to have that acknowledged before when, um, right after the vote, but it was missed in the Zoom craziness. But I just wanted to put that out there and, um, answer Mr. Gleason's question with it. Thanks.
I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting.
Oh, he's got his Neshoba mask on.
Second.
Amy got it, Amy got the second.
All right, I'm a list out, Joe?
He said yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm not.
Yes, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Elaine, yes, I want to thank you all so much. And we know that these decisions are difficult and they are, um, even though we have to make an absolute decision, they're complex, they're not absolute considerations. So a lot of factors, lot of considerations. Um, and I know that this is not the end of the work. This is just a beginning of a new phase of work. So thank you to everyone who's going to continue to keep working day and night, um, to get us all through this.
Thank you.
Everyone gets a rest.
Great job, Elaine, thank you.